Good morning. We're going to get started with an invocation by the Reverend Kayla Jean Bonneywell of Cathedral of Hope OKC and Church of the Open Arms, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance led by Councilman Mark Stonecypher.
We join me in silent prayer and centering as we begin the work that this day holds for us. O Holy One, we begin with gratitude. We are thankful for the breath in our lungs, for this exact present moment, for the land on which we find ourselves, in the indigenous nations who first called this place home. We thank you for the opportunity to serve publicly and to make a positive, meaningful, and lasting difference in the lives of our citizens, guests, and all living beings with whom we share this space. Loving God, we ask your blessing today upon our mayor, our city council folk from wards one through eight, and upon all who grace this room today. We especially ask your blessing upon Lisa Shriver, Luke Atkinson, Todd Stone, Apollo Woods, James Pickle, Brenda Hernandez, Mary Blakenhip Poyner, Richard Russell, and Shay Varnell. We ask your blessing upon our youth, Nicholas Catherine Samuel, Cameron Francisco Maya, Jorge Desiree Lane, Mackenzie, Julieta, Brinkley, Jesus, Fidel, Teresa, Fiza, Gladys, and Megan. And I ask forgiveness and grace for any name mispronunciations, as I know what that feels like. God, in the sacred text from my own tradition, we are reminded, "Ask and it will be given to you; seek and you will find; knock and the door will be opened to you." And so I ask, seek, and knock on our behalf today. We ask for blessings of goodness, harmony, and justice to be present within the Kiwanis Club, the Bond Advisory Committee, the Oklahoma City Convention and Visitors Commission, the Pioneer Library System Board, the Traffic and Transportation Commission, and the Youth Council. We seek to create a community where all are welcome, included, and equal, no matter their religion, age, race, gender identity, sexual orientation, ability, income status, or citizenship. And we knock on the door of tomorrow and pray for peace in every setting of our lives. Amen.
Good morning. I call this meeting of the City Council to order. We're going to get started with a resolution of commendation, and I'm going to make my way down to the front to handle that. Lisa? Where's Lisa? Ah, there you are. Come forward, Lisa. This morning, we are always thrilled to have the opportunity to recognize our city employees. We have the best city employees in the country, and today we are here to honor Lisa Shriver. But let's learn a little bit more about you, and so I would ask the clerk to please read this resolution.
Whereas Lisa Shriver has been a city employee for 21 years and is a record coordinator for the MAPS Office. Lisa writes all the MAPS Office memos and resolutions for the MAPS Three Citizen Advisory Board, the School Bond Advisory Board, and City Council agendas. Whereas Lisa assists in writing and editing contracts, change orders, and amendments, and helps the trust specialists with the approval of sire items and compiling agendas. Whereas Lisa plays a big part in keeping the MAPS Office running smoothly, she is always willing to take on extra tasks, consistently showing great leadership. Whereas Lisa has served as a Heart of the City Coordinator for the MAPS Office for many years, ensuring the department meets or exceeds their giving goal every year. Lisa was named Heart of the City Coordinator of the Year for 2017 after she led the way for her department to raise $9,230, exceeding their goal by 22%. Whereas Lisa has also served as the City Manager Appointing for the Oklahoma City Employee Association for 10 years, and she also volunteers for the Regional Food Bank of Oklahoma in her spare time to further give back to the community. Whereas this council desires to recognize Lisa Shriver for her dedication, professionalism, and commitment to the residents of the City of Oklahoma City. Now therefore be it resolved by the mayor and council of the City of Oklahoma City that they do hereby thank and commend Lisa Shriver, August 2019, South Oklahoma City Kiwanis Club Employee of the Month.
All right, yeah, let's hear it for Lisa. We all know what MAPS has meant to our city, and we also know how important and vital the role of citizen engagement is in that implementation process, especially through the Citizens Advisory Board. But none of that just happens magically, you know? People actually have to do the grunt work and navigate the bureaucracy, and if you have an email account around here, you probably see Lisa's name, at least I do, because I get all these agendas and things from her. And so it's really critical what Lisa does for our city, and we're all so grateful for that. And thank you for your dedication for over two decades to the people of Oklahoma City. This is a resolution, however, so, you know, to really show our pride in you, we will have to actually approve this. So let's see how that goes. I would accept a motion. Got a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, cast your votes. Pass is unanimously. You are the Employee of the Month. Would you like to say a few words?
I'm very honored and humbled by the nomination and by the selection, and I have a great team of employees, and I'm very thankful for all the friendships that I've made throughout the city, through the OCEA and other organizations. And I think this is an awesome place to work. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Let's hear it for Lisa one more time. Cheers to feet. Thank you. All right, we still find ourselves on item three on the agenda, which is Office of the Mayor. What I would propose, before we get to the Youth Council nominations or appointments, is to maybe handle items B through E all in one motion, if that's possible. All right, we've got a motion and a second for items B through E. These are appointments to the Bond Advisory Committee, the CVB, the Pioneer Library System, and the Traffic Commission. Any further discussion? Seeing none, cast your votes. Pass is unanimously. We now move on to item three F, the appointment of our youth counselors for 2019 and 2020. With that, I believe we would invite all of them to join us up here, and Debbie will lead the way.
Mayor, what I'd like to do at this time is say thank you to some folks that have been really helpful with this program.
And by the way, this is Debbie Martin, Chief of Staff to the Council.
Thank you. I'd like to introduce Debbie Forshi and Major Dexter Nelson, who are current program co-chairs. And then next year, we are honored to have LaShawn Thompson, our municipal court administrator, and Matthew Cagical that will be serving. This year, they will be shadowing. And so I want to personally thank these individuals for the time and the effort they spend to work with our youth. Thank you.
Thank you. Well, I think we will go around the horseshoe, and everybody will introduce their youth counselors. We'll start at ward one.
All right. First, first youth council member is Samuel Imessiani. Samuel is a senior at Putnam City High School. He plays basketball on the varsity team and is a member of National Honor Society. Samuel was selected to represent his school for Junior Scientist Day at OMRF this past year. He is also a member of HOSA, an organization for future health professionals. Samuel is currently the valedictorian for his school and prides himself in his strong work ethic to reach his goals. Let's give Samuel a round of applause. And Samuel, do you have anybody here you'd like to introduce?
Yes, I would like to introduce my older brother, David Imessiani.
The second council member from Ward one is Cameron Pennington. He is a senior at Putnam City West High School. He is ranked in the top 1% of his class and has received honors for academic excellence in many subjects. He is involved in DECA Student Council, Active Minds, National Honor Society, the School Spirit Squad, and many more. Cameron is the club president of YMCA Youth in Government, where he has authored five legislative bills and served in the Senate on many levels. He enjoys playing ice hockey and improving his skills. Please welcome Cameron.
I'd like to introduce my mom, Shonda, my grandpa, John, and family friends, Heather and Brooke.
So I have the honor of introducing you to the Youth Council for Ward Two. I'm going to begin with Maya Shadid. Maya is a senior at Claussen School of Advanced Studies. She is the founder of the Claussen SAS Middle Eastern Club, a representative for her school's Gay-Straight Alliance, and a member of the Hispanic Student Union and Black Student Union. Maya is also a volunteer for Positive Tomorrow's, Islamic Food Bank, and the OKC Arts Council. Maya holds concern for OKC youth who are undocumented. She believes that legislative action, financial support, and protection of the local immigrant communities is important for these individuals' success in Oklahoma. Please join me in welcoming Maya Shadid to...
Thank you so much. I'd like to welcome my awesome dad, Ed Shadid, for coming, and thank you so much, James.
And then I also have the honor of welcoming Francisco Hernandez to Ward Two's Youth Council. Francisco is a junior at Putnam City High School. He is the president of the Multicultural Student Service Association, as which he plans meetings and field trips, coordinates events with teachers, and communicates upcoming club activities. Francisco manages the girls' soccer team and loves to dance. You two are incredible. He enjoys volunteering in Mexico with his family during the summer by cleaning houses and helping those in need. Francisco is talkative and outgoing, loves to learn and travel, and enjoys meeting new people. Please join me in welcoming Francisco.
Thank you. I would like to introduce my sister, Justel Avila. She is over there.
It's my privilege today to introduce the Ward Three Youth Counselors. One of them, Jorge Peña, is not going to be able to be with us today. Jorge's a senior at Western Heights High School. He's involved in many activities at the school, and he's on a train right now headed for Providence, Rhode Island. So he's traveling and will not be with us, but you'll get to meet him at a later time. And then I'd like to introduce Desiree Rickett. She's a senior at Mustang High School. Other than the fact that she's planning to go to Harvard, she's a delightful young lady. I went to Princeton, a little competitiveness there. She's been involved in the state championship winter guard flag competition. She's a high-ranking academic student. She's been interning in a law practice, and it's my pleasure to introduce her and welcome her to the team. And would you like to introduce some of your family?
Okay, so I'd like to introduce my mother, Hong, and our family friends, Neil, Robert, Marina, Christian, and Morgan.
Thank you.
So it's my honor to introduce the Youth Council for Ward Four. We'll start with Mackenzie Reeves. Mackenzie's a senior at Moore High School. She's a member of the National Honor Society, American Indian National Honor Society, the Key Club, and the Superintendent's Leadership Academy. Mackenzie has been an advocate for the Relay for Life and Moore High School Safe Schools. She's a volunteer at Baptist Children's Home, the Salvation Army, and the Regional Food Bank. As the senior class vice president and student council senator, she's a respected leader in her school. Mackenzie enjoys traveling with her family and singing. Mackenzie sees stereotyping as a challenge to her peers. She believes just because youth belong to a specific generation doesn't determine their work ethic or abilities. Welcome, Mackenzie.
Thanks, y'all. So I would like to introduce my family, my whole support system, if y'all want to stand up. My parents, Dan and Amy Reeves, a whole lot of family. And two special guests are Dr. Romines, the superintendent of Moore Public Schools, and one of my principals, Mrs. Stark. And then save the best for very last, my 98-year-old great-grandpa, who is a Ward War II veteran. So thank y'all for coming.
All right, next, let me introduce Lane Youngblood. Lane is a senior at Carl Albert High School. He's a member of the Middel Public School Superintendent Advisory Board, as well as a varsity tennis team captain. Lane is a Midwest City junior rotarian. He volunteers at the Regional Food Bank, and he owns his own lawn business. Through volunteerism at Sunny Lane Family Church, Lane's used his outgoing personality to serve meals to others and participates in the youth group. Education funding is an issue which Lane feels will have a lasting impact on the state of Oklahoma and should be increased for the outlook of college and career-bound students. Welcome, Lane.
Thank you. I'd like to introduce my parents, Lori and Dude Youngblood, my sister Lace Youngblood, and the superintendent, Dr. Rick Cobb.
All right, it's my honor to recognize and introduce to you the at-large members of the Youth Council. We'll start with Nicholas. Nicholas Sayeg is a senior at Western Heights. He is president of the high school band. He's also president of Key Club and a member of National Honor Society. He's a member of Upward Bound, volunteers at local food banks and at the library. He's also on the OMRF board. He enjoys composing, playing, and listening to music. He's interested in studying business, and he would like to see economic problems and urban disadvantages addressed in Oklahoma City. Is there anyone you'd like to introduce, Nicholas?
Yes, I'd like to introduce my mom, Heather Sayeg, and my grandmother, Betty Amright. And we have a family friend, Anne. Could y'all stand? I wanted to see you guys. And then from my school, I have my wonderful, gifted, talented counselors, Mrs. Moss and Ms. Babbin, and then a school administrator, Ms. Klinger-Son.
Wow. Let's hear it for all of them, and Nicholas. We are also joined by Katherine Hill. Katherine is a senior at Bishop McGuinness. She is the historian and publicist for the National Honor Society. She's a member of the cross-country team, for which she has received varsity letters in advance to the state competition. Katherine is involved with Christ the King Catholic Church and the school, and she volunteers as an altar server and a summer camp leader. She also volunteers at the Oklahoma City Indian Clinic. She's interested in astronomy and has co-authored a research paper on that topic. She also plays the piano. She is passionate about civic engagement and seeks for other young people to pursue civic involvement and volunteerism through programs just like the Youth Council. And Katherine, do you have some folks you'd like to introduce?
I'd like to introduce my parents, David and Shannon Hill.
Great. Let's hear it for them and Katherine.
Julieta, stand up a little bit closer. Yeah, right here. Okay. Julieta Abara is a senior at Santa Fe South High School. She's a volleyball player and team captain while maintaining a high grade point average. She has participated in high school leadership conferences and Latinos Without Borders to expand her knowledge of culture, environment, empowerment, and leadership education. Julieta has raised funds for aspiring Americans through her volunteerism, with students helping initiate new excellent events, soccer tournaments, car shows, and festivals. She believes a lack of educational opportunities and access to information is an issue facing youth in Oklahoma City. Julieta actively seeks opportunities to influence young women through mentorships and remind others of opportunities in the community. Julieta.
And I believe you have one of your teachers here with you. Would you like to introduce?
Eli Argo. It's all the way in the back with the phone.
Yeah, Brinkley. Next, from Ward Five is Brinkley Abbott. She's a senior at South Moore High School. She's an active member of Key Club, initiating a recycling program at her school. She also is a member of the National Honor Society. Brinkley plays soccer and runs cross-country on her school's varsity athletic teams while also maintaining a very high class rank. Brinkley is dedicated and persistent in achieving her goals and serving the community. Brinkley believes that environmental issues plague the future of Oklahoma City. Brinkley seeks to raise awareness of the repercussions of current actions and to unite with her peers to undertake and prevent issues such as climate change and deforestation. Everybody, Brinkley. And you have some guests too, don't you?
I'd like to introduce all my family that came, if you guys want to stand, and my favorite chemistry teacher, Ms. Mylum. Wherever you are, there you are.
It is my honor to introduce the Youth Council members for Ward Six. First up is Jesus Barrigan. Jesus is a senior at Southeast High School. He is dedicated to his academics by maintaining a high GPA and actively participating in National Honor Society. He is a member of Link Crew to welcome incoming freshmen to high school and play soccer. Jesus wants to make sure everyone feels welcome and accepted. He is a dedicated volunteer to many causes, including OKC Love Program, the local public library, his church, and elementary students after school. Jesus believes that financial roadblocks to college are an issue many Oklahoma City students face. He currently works 20 hours a week to help pay for his future education. Please join me in welcoming Jesus.
Well, my parents weren't able to make it today, but I know they're at home supporting me, and my mom's out there working for me for my better future.
Next up is Fidel Frere. Fidel is a senior at Claussen School of Advanced Studies. He is a member of the Hispanic Student Union. He supports local Hispanic businesses and arranges floats for annual parades, volunteering 60 and more hours. Fidel uses his unique skills to assess and tech support for seniors in the comic book club to create animations and develop abilities. He enjoys playing club soccer and the guitar. Fidel is concerned about immigration in Oklahoma City. He advocates for the positive aspects of immigrants in society and their stability to economic and social strength in the community. Please join me in welcoming Fidel.
My parents couldn't make it either. They had prior responsibilities with my siblings, but I know they're at home, you know, watching me and supporting me along the way. And I'd just like to thank them for that. Thank you.
It is my honor to introduce you to some Ward Seven ladies that rock, and they are Teresa and Fiza. Teresa, she's a senior at Mount St. Mary Catholic High School, and she's the president of the Science National Honor Society, a key musician in varsity band, a runner in cross-country, and an assistant in her church. She has excelled both academically and in music by receiving a scholarship to Oklahoma State University, Go Pokes, and high rankings at state competitions for string performance. Teresa wants to prevent obesity and substance abuse among the youth of Oklahoma City through education to alternative options, as well as integration of youth programs for anxiety and depression in the lives of OKC youth. So please join me in welcoming Teresa Sorrells.
Thank you. I'm here with my mom, Anne, and my sister, Lydia, and my cousin, Audrey. So thank you for coming, guys.
And we also welcome Ms. Fiza Shake, and she's a senior at Edmund Santa Fe High School and the president of the Environmental Club, leading and planning activities for the 150-member club. She was also involved at her school as a junior class officer and a member of DECA and the Technology Student Association, and she's dedicated to her academics and seeks to attend an Ivy League university. She also believes that students should be encouraged and provided alternatives to vaping in order to pursue healthy, positive lifestyles in the Oklahoma City area. Ladies and gentlemen, help me welcome Ms. Fiza Shake.
I would like my beautiful mom in the back to stand up. My name's Agisha, and thank you for coming.
Good morning, Your Honor. It's a privilege for me to introduce the Ward Eight City Youth Counselors. I had a moment to visit with them before we started up here on the horseshoe, and these people are really engaging, really fun, and I'm excited to have them here. The first one is Gladys Green. Gladys is a senior at Edmund North High School. She is a dedicated volunteer at OU Medical Center and the Meals on Wheels program, as well as a leader in her school's JROTC. She has worked with Little Lights in Washington DC and John Ross Elementary School, where she works with students tutoring and encouraging them. She enjoys reading and seeks to benefit her community through her knowledge in African-American studies. Gladys believes additional mentorship programs could benefit youth in Oklahoma City for guidance on big decisions and future plans. Welcome aboard.
I would like to introduce my mom, Marcia, my dad, Herman, my godmother, Monica, family and friends, Lisa, and my Curtis, and my youth pastor, Ryan Fisher.
Our second Ward Eight Youth Counselors, Megan Neves. Megan is a senior at Deer Creek High School. She is a member of the National Honor Society and founder of her school's chapter of We Dine Together with the Be Strong organization. Megan loves to serve others. She's a very active member at Church of the Servant, where she is an intern and worship leader for her high school youth. Megan is a loyal volunteer through mission trips. She's a talented photographer. So much so, she recently won a Key Award, competing against students from several states in the Southwest. Welcome, Megan.
I would just like to thank my mom and my dad, Todd and Andy, for coming, my little sister, Rachel, my grandparents on both sides, my small group leader, Linda, and my youth pastor, Sane.
Well, we'll go ahead and approve these appointments. I'll take a motion in a second. Got a motion in a second for the item three F on the agenda, appointment of all of these people here introduced to the Youth Council. Any further discussion? Seeing none, cast your votes. Pass is unanimously. Congratulations and thank you. Thank you all for coming. Thank you for being willing to embark on this adventure for the rest of this year, this academic year, and thank you especially to all of the parents and supporters and friends that are here today. We are now going to move on to item four and beyond in our agenda. I recognize you are certainly welcome to stay, but I recognize that some of you may want to start some other part of your day now, so I might pause for a moment and let the exodus occur, so.
the exodus occur, so. All right. I think we're going to resume our business now. We're still on page 1 of your printed agenda. We are at item 4, Journal of Council Proceedings. We could take both items with one motion.
Move the items.
Got a motion in a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, cast your votes. Passes unanimously. That brings us to item 5, Requests for Uncontested Continuances. Mr. City Manager?
Yes, sir. On page 25, item 9H1, sorry, 9H1B. The, I will strike, we'll strike all of these items. We're going to mention 1108 Southwest Grand Boulevard. The owner has secured. Item C, 2516 North Kate Avenue, the owner has secured. Item H, 1503 Northwest 17th Street, to re-notify the owner. And item Q, 933 Southwest 54th Street, the owner has secured. On page 26, under item 9L1A, 1108 Southwest Grand Boulevard will strike because the owner has secured. And then item B, 2516 North Kate Avenue, the owner has secured. And that's all the items I have.
Okay. Brings us to revocable permits. Item 6A is a revocable permit with Tyler Media Group for Jake Jam and Z-Fest, August 15th through the 18th. Do we have anyone here who's signed up to speak? Okay, well then, it looks like...
I moved the item.
There's no Ward on here.
I think it's a mixed cover.
Okay, all right. You move the item?
I do move the item.
Got a second? Okay, motion in a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, cast your votes. Passes unanimously. Item 6B, Revocable Right-of-Way Use Permit with Plaza District Association to Hold the Plaza District Festival on September 28th. And we do have Selena, of course, who has signed up to speak. Selena Skorman.
Thank you. Good morning. I'd like to take this opportunity to tell you a little bit about the Plaza District Festival. It's going to be Saturday, September 28th. Don't worry, Scissor Tail Park grand opening. This town is big enough for the both of us. It's going to take place on the 1700 block of Northwest 16th Street, and it will be 11:00 AM to 10:00 PM. This event is a celebration of the revitalization of the Plaza District, and it highlights the wealth of artistic talent that we have right here in Oklahoma. We're going to have 35 visual artists line 16th Street, six food truck faves. We'll have three stages with local, all original acts of music every hour. We're going to have a great kids' area. All of this is free and open to the public. I want to give a special thanks to the city. We have the privilege of working closely with Councilperson Hammond and the City Planning Department, and without their support, we would not be the thriving district that you see and hopefully visit today. So, special thanks to the city, and I hope you all can come and join us on Saturday, September 28th.
Thank you. Councilwoman Hammond?
Yeah, thank you, Selena, for coming and talking about the festival. I'll just say, anyone who might be watching who's thinking about coming to the festival, I strongly urge you to walk, bike, or take the bus, because I know a lot of the neighbors around, around the plaza get overrun with people's cars in their neighborhood. So, anything we can do to be good neighbors, please, please do that. So, and I thank you in the Plaza District for working with the neighborhood and making sure that it's a great event. So with that, I motion for approval.
Got a motion in a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, cast your votes. Passes unanimously.
Thank you.
Have a great event. We'll now recess the council meeting and convene as the Oklahoma City Municipal Facilities Authority, where we have items A through E that we could take with one motion. Got a motion in a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, cast your votes. Passes unanimously. We'll now adjourn OCMF A and convene as the Oklahoma City Public Property Authority, where we have items A through C that we could take with one motion. Got a motion in a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, cast your votes. Passes unanimously. We'll now adjourn OCPPA and convene as the Oklahoma City Environmental Assistance Trust, where we have items A and B we can take with one motion. Got a motion in a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, cast your votes. Passes unanimously. We'll adjourn the Oklahoma City Environmental Assistance Trust and reconvene as the council, where we find ourselves on page 4 of your printed agenda, the item 7, the Consent Docket. And I know we have a presentation for item M and item AQ.
Right.
Is there anything else anyone wants to pull out for discussion? M and AQ. Is there anyone?
Yes, I'd like to pull AR for a separate vote.
Okay.
I would also like to possibly, I want to pull item 7Z and item 7Q.
Just to discuss?
Um, Z, we'll discuss, may possibly a separate vote.
Okay. And Q, you said?
Yes.
Okay.
And then, uh-huh, yeah, hi, 7P. Just not for a separate vote, just to discuss.
Okay.
Thank you.
Anything else? All right, we'll take them in order then, which would start with item N. This is some public art commission agreements.
Yes, we have Robbie Kinzel with our planning department.
Here we go. I was waiting for the screen. Good morning, everyone. And I was actually asked to talk about M1, M2, N, and 0.
Yes.
If I could have just a few extra minutes of your time. And thank you. Randy Marks is our Public Art Project Manager in the Planning Department Office of Arts and Cultural Affairs, and he'll be helping me bring this up. Thank you, Randy. So here are our four projects. I'm going to take them in order. We're talking about two different MAPS, three projects, the Bennett Event Center. And the event center, as you know, is already completed. We have a project, a $335,000 commission by Cliff Varga Studio out of California, and the piece is called Virga, and I'll walk you through that. And then also the MAPS 3 Convention Center, which is under construction. This is going to be an integrated piece, and it's by Susan Narduli, a $1.3 million commission. Of course, the 1% for art on a building of that size is much larger. This is one of two pieces that will be selected for that project. Then I'm going to talk to you about a private project, Oklahoma City Beautiful's 50th Anniversary Project, that I'll explain to you. And then MAPS 3 Wellness Center Number 2, and the MAPS 3 Wellness Center 2 is already completed as well. It's a $50,000 commission. So with the first project, the Bennett Event Center, Virga by Cliff Garden Studios, based on cloud formations and the changes in the Oklahoma River. As we were working with the operator and the designers of the facility at the fairgrounds, they wanted there to be a story told that would be more scientific, that as they would walk groups through the site, that they would learn something, that they might be able to develop some curriculum later about it. We had, we had thought about some technologically-based things, but Virga, as you can see here, this is how the artist presented it. It was all based on these formations. The artist will use aluminum rods and then changing LED lights, and you can see how this will hang in the lobby area. The lobby area, I guess, is highly sought out for different kinds of, kind of reception events, different kinds of fundraising parties, and then they do the major events, you know, more, the more active events, and where they bring in a lot of equipment in the back, the back part of the house there, so. Here's another rendering of what it might look like, and of course, the aluminum rods change colors as these LED lights change. Second project, Virtual Sky by Susan Narduli. This is a piece that is aircraft cable and titanium rods and small LED lights, and it's technologically driven. What you see is kind of a static, transparent, colorful piece, and then it will connect to live data feeds and also some programmed data feeds. So if it ever gets knocked off of live data feeds, it can automatically default, and then also it can be programmed for certain kinds of, like mini-event, you know, like light-changing if, if for a special event or the operator wanted something to happen at a certain time of day. This could be statically programmed to fit that. It'll, it'll support both atria in the facility. You can see here some other renderings. The third project, Oklahoma City Beautiful's 50th Anniversary Project. Oklahoma City Beautiful raised $38,000 to support this project. It was part, it was one of the recommendations of the Better Klassen Plan that the University of Oklahoma and ULI undertook several years ago with many stakeholders in the area. When Executive Director Lisa Sienar contacted the Office of Arts and Cultural Affairs, she wanted something a little different to celebrate their 50th anniversary. Also, they had a flag plaza down on, on South Klassen that had been removed for the new boulevard, and so wanted something, you know, that would be very different for this site. So we walked them through a selection process that is very similar to what the city uses for our 1% projects, where we had different stakeholders involved. Dennis Clowers, for instance, was one of the people that served on this committee. We had arts commissioners, and our artist-in-residence, Araba Bonavita, was our professional art juror to give her experience doing that. And the artist selected is Joe Slack. So there was a combination of finalists on this that did both, that did three-dimensional murals and two-dimensional murals, and what they really got out of commissioning Joe Slack is kind of sculpture and a mural, all in one. And we worked very closely with Public Works to make sure that the artists understood what would be needed as far as safety as these are being installed, and Public Works also asked that the upper rail be included, because it was very rusted. So Joe recommended this color, and he will complete that as part of his project. So this, this agreement today, item N, will allow us to proceed with a revocable permit that would then come back to you for approval, but this would be just permission to proceed to make this project happen. And then our final project is very different from anything that we've ever done before. It was requested, this is for MAPS Wellness Center Number 2, the operator, North Care, requested something with, where they could use the clay studio there at the facility, but also so that members could participate. And in all the research we've done, this is called participatory arts, and instead of receiving art, participating can then produce greater cultural literacy, so greater ownership, greater stewardship. So we worked very closely with the municipal councilor's office to make sure that we were meeting all of the state law requirements. For instance, the public money under the 1% for art cannot be used for programming, so we have to be very careful. But, but we, we worked out a process where members can participate. So this item O is a $50,000 commission for an artist who also has experience teaching, and that artist will work out a design of, of the actual program where participants can be part of it. We do have some examples here that Randy Marks was able to find. You know, certainly none of these will be exactly what you'll see, but we did want to give you a few examples. The Arts Commission, of course, takes a great responsibility as they're making recommendations to council, so when we introduced this to them, they recommended that we only undertake two projects. This is the first of those two, and then we come back and we reevaluate. So we won't be doing a lot of these right away, but we will be assessing very carefully as we go through them. And I did want to give you both our names and our numbers. Randy Marks, our Public Art Project Manager, will be handling these projects all the way through construction, and then if you have any programmatic questions too, please ask me. I also take on most of the projects, working with the, the private sector like Oklahoma City Beautiful. So I'd be happy to answer any questions you might have.
I have a couple of questions. First, how committed are we as a, a city when it comes to public art to make sure that our projects or our artists are local?
So one of the things, our, our state law requirements is anyone is eligible when they're 18 years or older. So, so when we announce, we have to announce broadly to make sure that we get as much, the best quality of art, artists and artwork possible. But what we do to assure more of a locally-based group, that also we can help work with them to make sure they have the right kind of competition materials, the right kind of training to be able to submit, for instance, how to, how to even submit to bid sync, is we did the boot camp earlier this year, and then we also have our pre-qualified pool, that we're now several years into it. And each time we do a pre-submital class, and we work directly with local artists who want to make appointments with us, we have both arts commissioners and other public art professionals that work for museums that are locally. And, and we, and Randy and I make appointments with them, and we go through their portfolios with them, and we help them develop materials to help them be competitive. We also, another thing that we're doing recently that we've seen a lot of success with is we're asking artists that we think have, have potential to participate as our professional art juror. So the Oklahoma City Arts Commissioners would like to have working artists on those panels. And what we've seen is that maybe an artist who's been shortlisted several times as a finalist but didn't quite get the job, when we can go ahead and have them as a panelist, helping select an artist, they learn a lot from that. They see, you know, how the process works from, from the other side, and they usually become a little more competitive, so.
So about how many times would one have to apply before they may be considered for a, for one of these projects?
I think that depends on the, the project. You know, something like a million, $1.3 million, or really anything probably over $150,000, they're going to be competing with national artists. Anything under $150,000, it's going to be a lot more locally and regionally based, just because there's travel involved. There's a lot of hotel travel, and there might not be enough commission money there for an artist from other places to even compete with it. So it really depends on the artist and the type of work they do. You know, an artist that has like a super narrow scope of, of the type of work they do, and they're just narrowly defined and they're really focused on that, it might not have a really broad appeal, they might apply several times. But artists that generally kind of learn more from comments, you know, a lot of our artists, when they don't get selected, they ask us, "Could I get juror comments?" And we share with them some of the things the jurors said, and that sometimes helps to them kind of open up kind of the type of work they do to where it's more generally selected. You'll see a lot of more narrowly scoped artists will be a better fit maybe for private gallery and private commissions, so.
Well, just, and then I'll give a couple of comments. I know as we're looking at selection pools and different things, even for upcoming projects, I think we should possibly consider just using... possibly consider just using the art of whoever those applicants are instead of their names with the submission, because it's so easy for us to Google whoever it is, to really see their work or to see who they are as a person. And therefore, in some aspects, it takes away from what the scope could be of work that we're looking at and what we would like for it to be. And also with the whole convention center, these are so lovely, but I, I really truly feel we missed the mark to localize our, our local convention center with local art. And I'm, I'm hoping with future projects, we'll be able to make sure that we are very intentional about making sure a local or Oklahoma type of artist is a part of the process and, and able to be displayed, because obviously, we're going to have people traveling from all across the country and possibly all across the globe to be a part of our convention center. And it's, it's very unfortunate that we won't have right now with the pieces that we've seen, local art to show how great our artists are in Oklahoma.
So one of the things we've done with the convention center, we completely agree with that, is that we've split up the money. There, there is actually another $500,000 in the 1%. And so what we can do when the project is completed is we can look at how people are using the building site and where there might be opportunities for art. And we can do some more projects, especially from the pre-qualified pool, so it has more local representation. But, but while we're going through, you know, the construction, we can't really do that. It's very similar to what we've done on Wellness Center Number Two. You know, the, originally, the, the mural or some type of project could have happened in the pool, but the operator was uncomfortable until he saw how the facility was being operated. And then he became much more comfortable with a type of art, you know, where they really needed it in the facility. So we certainly can do that.
And then my, I'm sorry, this is my last question. Is it a conflict for us to go out and actively recruit some of those artists that we see to, to submit and apply to be a part of the?
No, we encourage you to ask artists to contact us so we can make appointments with them and walk them through the process and how to get registered in bid sync. Randy and I never vote on a, we're, we're just facilitators. So it's not a conflict of interest at all for us to work with artists and help them understand the process. We're glad to do it.
Regarding Classen, I have no issues with the art. I am curious, however, what the conversation has been like considering a BRT project is, to begin operations, as we all know, spring of 2023, my COPA board just awarded the contract to the engineers who are going to be going out there over the next several months and looking at all of Classen from downtown to Northwest Expressway. And I have to tell you, literally, that part of Classen is, I think, I, I, I think my least favorite part of Classen. I don't understand it. Fight me. Yeah, I'm, I don't, it doesn't make sense what was even the plan when that was engineered that way. And it just seems premature to put art on something there that I would imagine an engineer would look at as possibly up for reengineering as we move toward the BRT process. Like, we haven't even seen a report yet from the people who were awarded that contract. Have you all been talking to BRT with Embark? Are, are we nervous about this? Like, I, I think I read that they could remove that installation as well?
So I've been working very closely with Public Works. In fact, Eric Winger assigned a person to work directly with me who, who pretty much held our hand all the way through it about safety and things. No, I have not been working with Embark, but certainly, this is a process. What would happen next if council approves this today is that we would bring a revocable permit back. And the, the whole revocable permit process requires a lot of multi-department coordination to even get that to you. So, and also, this is a limited period of time that this project could stay in place. Right now, the way that this public art agreement is written, it's up to 10 years unless the city has a reason to notify Oklahoma City Beautiful that it needs to be removed. And then it could be extended by mutual agreement of the party. So it is a limited time.
Okay. I, I, again, just want to make sure I'm.
Thank you for bringing that up.
I'd like to see you all coordinate with that. Thank you.
Any other questions or comments for Robbie? Okay. Thank you. We'll then advance to item P that was requested by Councilwoman Cooper for special discussion, Britton Business District.
So I just wanted to draw attention to the Britton District. I'm very excited about the progress that that group of folk are making right now toward revitalizing a very historic part of the metro. And to, you know, I share that with Councilwoman Nice, and she and I have attended meetings up there. And this is going to be a moment where they are going to further, further their progress. And I just wanted to call attention to that and congratulate them and let them know that this is a project, Britton District, that councilperson Hammond and I and our working group in MAPS Four have identified as a place for, for further placemaking and street enhancement. So we're really excited to work with you all to see what's possible up there. And, you know, that area along Western from about Wilshire up to 122nd Street, I did a police ride along, I think I mentioned a couple weeks ago. And we're, we have a lot of challenges up there when it comes to generational poverty and crime. And at the same time, there are people up there who are incredible, and they love their neighborhoods, and they love their kiddos, and they want to see that place thrive. And I, I, I believe passionately that the success of the Britton District is integral to that part of town, coming back to life and to our kids up there having better opportunities. So just want to say thank you. I just wanted to draw attention to the Britton District.
And I'll echo that sentiment since we also share that word. That part of Britton and had a meeting yesterday with a developer who's hoping to do some more development on, with the Britton District and just the revitalization to breathe life back into Britton District and to understand the history of just the Britton District in itself, being part of Route 66 and being, some of those areas being built in the 1920s, and those buildings are still standing, helps to tell a great story of revitalization for the Britton District. So there's some great folks definitely working in that area to make sure that the story is told and also that there is inclusion with the community that lives around that Britton District to be a part of this process.
Great. Item Q, Councilwoman Nice, you wanted to talk about that?
Yes, I was just curious as far as allocations, when we have these social services, grant funds and the approval, just how the money is allocated for each one, because I'm, I'm seeing that there are different price ranges for all. So I was just curious as to what that process is and, and how we determine what organization gets what amount.
Yeah, no problem. Jared Shade, Oklahoma City Planning Department, oversee the homeless programs for the city. We have what we call a continuum of care board. That term is designated by HUD, not us. It defines your service area. You're required to have this board or committee to make determinations for all your federal programs. That board also makes those funding determinations for this grant. We put out an application when the funds become available, the 121,000. We submit that on, out to our service providers via email. We submit it to the Coalition and Poverty List Serv. That's a local organization that works with nearly all the homeless nonprofits in the city that we know of, so they can receive it. And then we also post it on their website because it's a little easier to navigate to there than it is on ours. At the moment, we're trying to fix that. Then we set a due date once we get those in. Anybody can apply for it. Someone's a 501(c)(3). We get them in, we schedule the times with our committee. The committee meets, they review the applications, they can come in and they propose. So they also propose their projects, and then they're scored and they're ranked. And then those, those funding determinations are based basically on those ranks that come out. And so it's, we do look at what they had the last year, if they're a receiving agency that came there last year, because we don't want to significantly affect another program too much. But we oftentimes, this is one of the more competitive projects we have. Given the low amount of money, that means we get a lot of applications. I'm not criticizing, I'm just saying comparatively, it's, it's, it's a lot more applications than we get for other projects because there's less, the federal requirements are not there. So we also get new projects that come in. So if you want to add to that, that means those allocations tend to sometimes go down on some years for other projects from previous years. No problem. Any other questions? All right.
Okay. Thank you. Then item Z, Councilwoman Nice.
Yes, I was curious as to when we're looking at these park improvements, there is a decrease of, of quite a bit when it comes to our parks. And I was looking at the plans and specifications that were approved from November the 6th for a couple of these parks that are receiving a great decrease. So I'm quite curious to know as far as our shelter and park picnic improvements that were supposed to happen in Edwards, as well as the park walks and path improvements, as well as Washington Park for those path improvements and park paving improvements for Edwards, what we're looking at, are these based on the plans from 2007? Or what are we looking at as far as these plans? Because I, I know there are still a lot of improvements that still need to be made.
Thank you. Eric Winger, Public Works Director. In response to the questions, so today is a change order and amendment that is actually a decrease. And it's not uncommon as we work through a project like this one, we're working on multiple sites and where the product was bid for, for six different parts for a variety of improvements. And so with that said, as we go out with contractors and as contractors submit those bids, they're submitting pricing that is, in many cases, unit pricing. So not knowing exactly what all the improvements are, linear footage of sidewalk, the amount of earthwork that might be required, the amount of sodding that might be required, some of the other quantity changes on here is things like detour signage and things like that. So we go into a project when its first bid with some unknowns, because we get very close to finishing projects, and this one is expected to wrap up in November, here in just a few short months, we're finding that we just simply have some underruns on some of those unit price quantities. And so with that, as we near the project completion, we have projects like this one that are going to come in slightly under budget. And this is just a reconciliation of quantities that the contractor didn't require to complete the project that we're now removing from the project.
And there's no change in the scope of the projects, right?
So the general scope of the improvements with the pavilions and the parks and the paths did not change. But I would not argue that we could always do more at all the parks in Oklahoma City. And that's something that obviously Public Works and Parks would work very closely together on future projects and future enhancements. This scope didn't change, though. This is just a reconciliation of quantity.
Well, I'm, I'm still curious as, because even with the definitions that we received, because I think it was Councilwoman Cooper and I that were kind of curious about the decrease. Was it you? Okay. As far as some of these improvements, is it possible to defer this and bring it, pick it back up? Because I, I want to, I want to physically see every single item that was decreased by item number as far as these parks are concerned.
We could do that. The, the change order itself has those outlined, but we could sit down and go over those together to kind of show what that looks like. I would relate this also. You're going to see many of these, especially on our Oklahoma City street projects. We bid them very much the same way. You will see additional decreased change orders on, on other street and other infrastructure type projects, you know, coming before the council in the future as we continue to complete a lot of work. But happy to sit down and discuss.
Does it hurt anything? It doesn't hurt anything with the progress of the project or anything we're doing with?
You know, with it being a decrease, the answer's likely not. I mean, with it not being finished until November, so I don't know that a, a two-week deferral would.
Okay. Great.
Be a problem.
Well, I'd like to defer this item as I want to definitely go more in depth with what we're looking at as far as a decrease for these parks, because I, I mean, I've driven by some of these parks and some of these improvements, I, I want to see in, in physicality as well as in numbers by line item, what the decrease was.
Happy to do that.
I just want to, for my edification, I understand, you're saying no, no scope of the project has changed, right? Just things cost less than you thought they were going to cost.
And I don't, I don't disagree with that, but I still want to see.
But I just want to, that's correct, right? I just want to, for my own.
That's correct. And it's not complicated. This change order, this is the net, the 113,000 is a net decrease. There's actually, as a part of the change order, the amendment increases to the project too.
Right. But you're not, with this item, you're not eliminating any aspect of the plan, correct?
There, not that I'm aware.
Okay. But with the deferral, you can be more sure.
But we'll sit down and we can go, we can go over those items line by line. I mean, there, there's, there's a lot of items that are in this change order that I do not have in front of me, but we absolutely can sit down and go over those to make sure there's no questions.
And that's the information we did not receive. So that's the information that I would like to see.
Okay. So got a motion.
Well, and I just, I have one question. So I, I might be hearing it wrong, but does that mean there's $113,000 that could be spent on these parks? Because this, this, the scope that has been happening is completed and costs less?
So when we look at our bond program and you look at bond funding, there are listed project amounts that we start off with on every single project. Some projects come in over budget, some come in slightly under budget, but in the end, we've got a commitment from the city's perspective to complete all the projects as described. The monies that would potentially be saved on this project, and it's not 100% complete, it's possible before November that we have to come back with another change order and amendment to reconcile any work that's between now and then. But any monies that are saved on a project go back into a parks bond fund for future allocation. So they stay with park improvements, they stay with the bond program, and they can go for additional enhancements. So they aren't lost, and they can't be used for any other purpose.
Well, I'm moving that we defer for two weeks as we look further in depth what these items are line by line.
Okay. Did I hear a second? Okay. Motion in a second to defer item 7Z for two weeks. Any other discussion? Seeing none, cast your votes. The deferral passes unanimously. Okay, moving on to item AQ, presentation.
So we have Amanda Carpenter with the municipal councilor's office here to present this item. We had a few questions from council members on this and just wanted to clarify. And we need to make a correction from the memo as well.
Yes, in the memo, it does state $1.6 million worth of MAPS funds would be reimbursed, and it's actually 1.1. I'll, I'll explain that. Back in November of 2017, city council allocated $9 million worth of MAPS funds for a new parking garage in the north quarter shore area. In December of 2017, the Oklahoma City Economic Development Trust entered into a purchase agreement for the property located just east of the Convention Center Hotel for a Convention Center parking garage. They purchased that property from OGNE. That's the property that had the building known as the OGNE Gold Building located on it. The purchase price was paid through MAPS funds as well as an Oklahoma, or an OCEDT loan. The purchase agreement did provide that OGNE is to remove all asbestos from the building as well as complete the environmental cleanup on the parking lot. Then OCEDT would complete the demolition of the building and all environmental testing on the property. After completion of the environmental testing, OGNE has the obligation to provide all necessary environmental cleanup. They have subsequently agreed that they will do that on a reimbursement basis in order for the city to continue its timeline for construction of that parking garage. OCEDT engaged Okura to assist in both the demolition work and the environmental cleanup and the environmental testing, just as the city has done on many other projects. When we do environmental cleanup, we contact the Oklahoma Department Environmental Quality, ODEQ, and we enter into memorandums of understanding or memorandums of agreement related to that cleanup. In this case, OCEDT is participating in what's called the Brownfields Program. It's a cleanup program that provides protection for legal liability for environmental conditions that may be present on the property. The agreement that is provided to you is part of this item. There are two of them because subsequent to the purchase agreement, it was determined that the parking garage will fit on approximately a little over half, close to 60% of the block. The other portion of the property would be then available for private redevelopment. The resolution before you provides for the council to concur in OCEDT's approval of the memorandum of agreements with ODEQ for the cleanup of that property. It also provides for Okura to be the entity that will perform the actual cleanup and authorize Okura to seek that reimbursement from OGNE directly rather than having to go through the trust because Okura, or because OGNE is contractually obligated to pay for that cleanup. And lastly, the resolution provides for staff to start the process to do what's called a lot split, which breaks up that block into two separate pieces of property, one which will continue to be used for the parking garage, the other which would be available for private development. A subsequent purchase agreement will come back to OCEDT, the council for concurrence, related to that conveyance of the property for private development. And it will include a provision that requires reimbursement of the MAPS funds, specifically the. Specifically, the amount that will be reimbursed is expected to be $1.1 million. That MAPS funds, because it is allocation for the parking garage, would then be available for construction of the Convention Center parking garage. Happy to answer any questions.
Amanda?
Yes.
Who gets the proceeds from the development of that 0.4% of the block?
The proceeds, that would be an agreement that would be entered into with the private developer, and it would be anticipated that those proceeds would be used in part to pay back a portion of the OCD loan that was used for the purchase of the property.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions for Amanda? Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Item AR, Councilwoman Hammond. You wanted to hold this off-deferred item for further discussion?
Yes, off-deferred. Yeah, so I, as you all are aware, we defer this item from a few weeks ago to connect further with staff and talk more with the private developer who is interested in rehabbing the 200 North Chertel building that we call the Old City Jail. I am still very interested in striking that item from this resolution and just moving forward with the other two buildings to demolish them, because I think that we can be creative and find ways to work with this developer and not use city assistance like we have for other projects. I am, you know, I hear from some staff that it's a difficult project, but I'm really, I've gotten a lot of feedback from people in the community that they're very tired of us losing historical old buildings, particularly when it's for storage of private property. So that's kind of where I am. I'd welcome any discussion. I don't, I know, I saw the developer here earlier, so I don't know if we...
Marva has signed up to speak.
Okay. So yeah, if we want to have anyone who's signed up to speak come and share with us, that'd be great.
Okay. Marva Ellard.
I know.
If you wouldn't mind stating your name and address.
Marva Ellard, 1521 North Chertel Avenue. And I feel like Tuesday mornings every other week is on my agenda as well. So hi again. I share Councilman Hammond's thoughts on this. I very much would like to continue the discussion to see if we can find uses and an agreement on this building to keep this building standing. Mr. Bryant and I have been working on some pro formas the last few days, and I think they still need some work, but we have been in discussion on some uses and some potential income sources on that building. And I would like to continue those discussions. So we both feel like we're presenting accurate information that we both think is realistic and uses that we think are realistic from the city's point of view. We've never really determined what uses might be agreeable to the city. I think we're looking at some I hope would be agreeable to the city. And so I'd like to ask for a little more time to work with Mr. Bryant to present some more information to you all.
I'd like to hear from Mr. Bryant, if we could.
Okay. Brent Bryant?
And I guess what I'd ask you to do, Brent, is it's my understanding that the first RFP on this project went out on June 20th, 2017. And as we find ourselves here today on August 13th, 2019, we've never had a successful RFP that's been approved by the committee that oversees that. Is that correct?
We did, there was a body that did approve an RFP. We sent out RFP. Marva was designated by this council back in April of 18 as a conditional redeveloper, with the idea that we would bring back an agreement by the end of June of 2018, which we were not able to do that. We subsequently had additional discussions about this project. What it comes down to are the uses of the property, what's an acceptable use by the city, and then the implications of some features of the facility. For example, the smoke stack. If the smoke stack is torn down, there are those that say the building will not qualify for historical tax credits. We haven't got a definitive answer on that, but if that's one thing, if this property, I think Marva and I would both agree today, this building does not qualify for historical tax credits, I don't see it happening at all. It's still a very challenging project because of the nature of the improvements that need to be done and just in the condition of the building. So, but we have been looking at uses, so it comes down to, what do you do with the smoke stack? What's an acceptable use? And then with those uses, what's a reasonable expectation as it comes to what will the market bear, what will the market pay to utilize those services? So, or utilize that facility? And that's what it's coming down to. And we've looked at, Marva and I looked over this past week, looked at if you did storage on the top four floors. And then still trying to find something that would be acceptable by the city as to what you'd want on the first two floors. And you are somewhat limited on those, too.
That storage would be limited to what, $10 a square foot somewhere in that neighborhood?
That's where we don't know. Marva believes she can make much more money than that, $10 a square foot. I did talk to a commercial realtor yesterday to assess, just how it is, what's a reasonable amount? And they were thinking $10 or $15 a square foot. But she and I were looking at maybe $25 or $30 a square foot. Again, if the market, we don't know what the market can bear there.
I guess it's fair to say, I asked you to prepare some projections and pro formas to take a look at this, and you did one with no acquisition price and then one with acquisition price, and then one, what you called, reality. And out of those pro formas, none of them showed the project as being profitable, correct?
Under that scenario, yes.
And then also, to date, we have, and we've been doing this since 2017, we have no purchase price yet for the land.
That's correct.
There's been no offer made, there's been no indication that the person approved for the RFP has the ability even to purchase the land. We have no identified tenants, correct?
We have not identified any, I would say, she's, she can answer that, because she's identified some concepts.
Yeah.
But no tenants.
We have no cash flow analysis or cash flow projections that have been finalized by her at this time, correct?
We don't necessarily have anything that's ironclad, because we, again, we don't have any tenants that we've identified.
And then we don't have a lender that's been identified, is that correct?
I think she has identified a lender, but again, until we get to the uses, you get to the uses, so you can determine what your costs are going to be at the end of the day, but then you have to consider what the income that those tenants will provide. She needs that before she can really go to a lender, in defense for her, before she can go...
Sure. There's been no loan agreement signed with any financial institution.
No, sure. That's not, my understanding, there's not...
My understanding is that she, we can't, it's not reasonable for us to ask her to do that when we don't have any kind of agreement.
I've got a couple more questions, if you don't mind. And Brent, I just want to make sure I understand that when, there has been a loss of 235 parking spaces at the public safety campus area, correct? And it's also correct that if we make this into a parking lot, that will help us get an additional 166 spaces, which is needed at that public safety campus, correct?
I would say yes.
And we know that Chief Gorley is an advocate of having these additional parking spaces, so people like victims who have to come down there and be interviewed and have a safe place to park, correct?
Yes, sir. We talked to the court administrator and to Chief Gorley's office and asked them about the daily visitors that visit that area. And the court's estimated they have about 600 visitors in the area on a daily basis, and then the police department has about 140, 150.
How many of those are for victim services?
About 140 or 150 for victims.
Per day?
Well, it's victim services, attorneys, media...
So I'm acting, I'm asking, my understanding is that the concern of parking for victim services are people who have experienced violence. I'm not so concerned about attorneys and media being able to park in a secure place to access a building that... How many spaces do we have at the Arts Parking Garage that are empty on a day-to-day basis?
We're probably about half full.
And how many spaces are in that garage?
There's 800. So we're probably about half full.
And how many spaces do we need for, that we would get from this parking lot where people could just walk three blocks?
Well, we anticipated, if all three facilities are taken down, it's 166, I believe, spaces.
So we have over that, maybe double or more that at the Arts Parking Garage right now that attorneys, media can access. So I'm still just not convinced that, like, I want to know how many people who have survived violence are coming to the police department on a weekly basis? And if it's so many people that we can't accommodate them by reserving some spots right in front of the police department, that, or my understanding is there's locked parking for police officers, can we not accommodate people who have been victims of violence to go a few extra steps to help them, rather than just say, well, we just need to demolish this? Because people who are there as attorneys and media need to park 20 feet from the door? I don't, when we have, again, a parking garage that is sitting mostly empty that the city is trying to pay that service on. So I just, to me, the conversation of this building not being able to be profitable, well, parking's not profitable. Like, we are subsidizing, again, private storage, or storage of private property, that we can find other creative ways to help the people who have experienced violence in our community to go access services. I just, I don't, I don't understand, it doesn't add up in my head that we need to demolish the, that demolishing this building for parking is what's necessary. So that's kind of, I just want to insert that into the conversation, because I just, that's never quite added up, as we've been having this conversation over the last few months. And to, again, to use people who have experienced violence as a scapegoat for demolishing a building, or making an excuse that that's why we need to demolish a building, just isn't, I feel like that's doing it a service to the people who have experienced that violence. So I'm not really quite sure where to go with that. But the reason I want to strike this and just sort of move on is so that we can have the time, rather than coming back every two weeks to kind of rehash some of the same stuff, when, again, I've, trying to connect with council members and staff and then with Marva, has just been, it's a puzzle piece of people's schedules. And so I just, I don't feel like we've been, we are really giving it the time and effort we can. If we could just, give us a little more time and not have to come and rehash the same information every two weeks, that would be useful to just, again, my understanding is we have not given enough information to the private developer to be able to go identify a loan and body or identify tenants. That's a waste of her time at this point. So that's why I'm requesting for us to be, wanting to move to strike this piece of the item, so that we can, just give us a little more space to really hash this out without the pressure of every two weeks having to come and have the same exact conversation.
I would say we need to go back to 2009, when the bond election that first authorized the construction of the new municipal court building and the new police department headquarters in terms of looking at how much time has been made available to analyze this and to find alternative solutions. Just this past weekend, there's a pretty in-depth article that talks about despite record-low unemployment here in Oklahoma City, we're experiencing a pretty high vacancy rate in terms of both office and retail use here in Oklahoma City. To use this building for storage in such a prominent location that requires, to some degree, a certain level of security, given the location between the municipal court building and the police headquarters, is somewhat silly. There are plenty of storage facilities. We get requests for new storage facilities each council meeting. Certainly since June of 18, there's not been any viable proposals, and I think that's what's delaying this process. There's no viable use for this building. Now, what I would recommend is that, since the municipal jail building was constructed along the same time as, and is in the same architect venue, I guess, I don't know the term, that the Civic Center, the City Hall Building, and the County Courthouse, let's start creating walking tours or something like that, so people can have access to those buildings and really demonstrate their appreciation for historical structures. This one being brought down won't have that significant impact. We still have the other three structures remaining and are being fully utilized. This one isn't. So compare, for example, 100 Park Avenue Building, a great old structure, as well as all the new office buildings that were constructed much more recently. If they're struggling to be filled, think about this old building that we all recognize has problems. Their ceilings are 6 feet 10 inches. Yeah, they're just, it's just not viable. And why we need additional storage facilities in this particular location as a possible alternative use is beyond me. I move for approval in terms of moving this forward and beginning the demolition.
Okay. So that's a motion for this item separately from the consent docket? Is that how I'm taking it?
Oh, I would take them all. I don't care.
Well, I would just say, if we're going to talk about that storage is not a good use for this site, we are talking about demolishing a building for storage, just of different things. So if we're going to talk about a good use for this site, I feel like you've just made my argument that this is a horrible idea to create storage in this part of town, when not only, again, do you have storage of the arts car parking garage, but West Village is quickly moving towards the down Main Street and has a public parking garage a block away from the police headquarters and the municipal courts.
Yeah. And we could keep this discussion going for eight hours. My mind is made, and any further discussion or additional information brought forward isn't going to change my mind. So we can continue this discussion as long as you all want to.
That's why I'm asking for this...
But I'm ready to vote on it.
And that's why I'm asking, that I want to move to strike the jail building from this item, so we can move forward on it and give us, again, I appreciate that this has been an ongoing discussion, but councils changed, we haven't been a good steward of our old buildings in the city, and the fact that we have a city-owned building that former council has just decided is not a priority, is not, to me, a good reason for us to just, like, throw up our hands and say, well, I guess we just got to give up now. So that's why I am asking to strike that, the jail building from this item and move forward, so that we aren't having the same conversation every two weeks, and we can work on a creative solution.
Well, then, I call for the question then.
May I ask real quick? I'm sorry, Mayor.
Sir, sure. I mean, we certainly can have debate. He is correct. He was the first to make a motion. I anticipated you to make a motion, but it didn't happen, and then he jumped in. So we now have a motion and a second on the table to approve the item. I would take Councilwoman Hammond's request to at least have it be considered separately from the rest of the consent docket, as just for this item, 7AR.
Yes, I would concede to that.
But we certainly have time for debate on the motion to approve AR as it is, and so Councilman Cooper, you're recognized.
It's just, thank you, Your Honor. Just a quick question. The smokes, sorry. Make this official. The smoke stack, that's not part of the jail, though, correct?
It was built with the jail. Catherine's probably a better...
Catherine's probably a better source of historic information.
So, I have reached out to the State Historic Preservation Office. Um, there have been some things that have been brought up at the city council meeting, plus, um, within our own office, and there, um, it's a big negotiation. Because technically, as, um, Councilman Greiner pointed out last week, or two weeks ago, the other two buildings that are there are certainly 50 years old and could also be considered eligible for the National Register. So, what we're really focusing on here is the period of significance being the construct, the original construction timeframe. That would eliminate the other two structures from being considered under this particular justification for a National Register nomination. So, they could go away. The smoke stack and the power, the power plant facility that it is associated was part of the original construction of the, of the, um, PWA Police Headquarters Building, and it fed power to the other buildings in the area. So, um, technically, it is part of it. We have held off asking for, um, a formal letter from the State Historic Preservation Office because this is a very important thing to consider, and, um, we need to be able to formulate the right justifications for eligibility depending on what kind of a negotiation we get out of working with city council and city representatives for the private development. I'd also like to take this opportunity to say that we were the only developers that responded to the initial RFP in 2012, and we were called in for an interview, what presume, we presumed to be an interview, but really ended up being a conversation with the police department. And there was never any resolution to that RFP. We were never told we got the job or we didn't get the job, or that the thing had been canceled. So, then, when the RFP was reissued in 2017, or 2018, we responded again. And so, here we are today, finally excited that we have the opportunity to show everybody what kinds of creativity we have and the ability to save this building and make it part of, you know, a contributing part of our fabulous downtown, reassociate it with the other three buildings within which, um, it was originally funded with the same funding source, the same designers, the same contractors, and put those things back, pieces back together. So, while, you know, I don't like tearing down anything, right? That's my reputation, and I have to protect that. However, those two mid-century buildings, if that's what's going forward for, um, downtown design review consideration, we can, what? Oh, then we can, we can probably move forward with that. However, I would like to have the smoke stack and the power plant, um, at, at least for the moment, associated with the jail as it was historically.
Well, that's why I was asking, because if we struck the jail from the demolition of the other two buildings, I needed to know if that smoke stack was something that was going to be preserved as well, because otherwise, it seems like you wouldn't be able to get your historical tax credits for the jail, so I, that would be my only question.
And it's a delicate issue. That's why I'm trying to be kind of open about it.
Thank you.
Um, even so, to move forward with the other two buildings and, um, would be fine if we can just save the smoke stack and the power plant for today and move forward with the other two buildings. I think that that's what would help us as developers actually move forward, because that was part of what we put forward in the beginning, was that those other two buildings need to go away in order for us to move forward.
Councilman Stone?
So, I don't know who wants to answer this question. Would it be possible to keep the smoke stack and lose the building? Because the, when I go over there and look at it, I love the smoke stack. I think it, it represents something that's beautiful to look at, but, um, I mean, that, that building, other than the interior and the exterior, is fine, but it's got problems written all over it. I mean, the outside facade's falling off, and I think to do it right, you'd have to rip every floor out of the stupid thing, so, um, I mean, I certainly love seeing it, seeing things preserved. I just don't think this is the right project to, to try and preserve. But I am wondering if we could save the smoke stack?
Uh, you could save it if you want. I don't know that, uh, I mean, it doesn't help us. I want to correct a few things that have been said today, if I may. The kind of storage we're talking about is record storage, not item storage. Record storage creates a lot more income than item storage does. I spent part of last Wednesday with commercial realtors very well-versed on downtown, and I agree with Councilman Greenwell that, that we don't need to create more office space when we have a glut of office space, but I think we're talking about four to 6,000 square feet of office space, which would be basically used by small business people or a business incubator, which, those have proved successful and useful. We have one of them on 21st Street. We've had two different sets of structural engineers in that building, and Councilman Stone, it looks a lot worse than it is. It's, it's very sound. I've had a demolition company in there tell me how sound it is. Um, it has not been well-maintained. It has not been treated as well as we think it should have been treated over the years, but that building is, um, solid. Basically, as you say, you'd have to go in and clean out the floor plates and, and, uh, but it's very doable. I agree with, uh, one thing that was said is, without the tax credits, the project is not viable. Councilman Stone, sorry, for the pro formas you were referring to were pro formas that were prepared without much input from me, and Mr. Bryant and I have been working on that the last couple of days to update those with information that I have had. When we responded to this RFP, it did not contain a legal descrip, description of land that would be conveyed. So, it's hard to put in a purchase price when you don't know what you might be buying. And, as you all know much better than I do, anything owned by the city would have to be appraised before we could agree on a purchase price anyway, and as far as I know, there's never been an appraisal on that building. I know it's an easy building to give up on. There's a lot of reasons to give up on that, but I think it sets the wrong precedent that the city does not value preservation. I think it sends the wrong message to the business community that it's okay to tear a building down for a surface parking lot. I don't think we do let private business owners in downtown Oklahoma City do that, and I am very willing to continue working on this project if council so wishes.
Okay, any further discussion? Councilman Greenwell has agreed to amend his motion to separate out, um, the jail from the other two items, so that there, we, we would deem his motion to be, two motions for each of those, um, two things, two divisions, the jail and then separately the headquarters and the municipal court building, um, which I think accomplishes basically the purpose you were achieving with the potential amendment motion.
Can you restate that? I'm not sure.
So, basically, basically, we'll vote on them separately. Uh, the, we'll vote on the resolution for the police headquarters and the municipal court building, and then we'll vote on the resolution for the city jail.
Is it city jail and smoke stack?
Good question. Is the, where is the smoke stack in all of that?
It's, it would be part of the jail, right? It's considered part of that jail struc, I mean, it's, it's a separate structure, but it's part of that jail building.
Well, I just want to, for the record, we are saying city jail and smoke stack.
Sounds fair. Also, for the record, this is a resolution authorizing an application be made for a certificate of approval from downtown design. We would see all of these items at the end of the review process at least twice, according to.
So, we would come back, we would, i, if they went through the process, if it was approved and went through the process and it came back, it would come back for a bid for demolition and then an award of contract. So, we'd put out bids for demolition, we'd come back for award of contract, council would still have to approve both of those items.
So, just worth noting, bulldozers, regardless of what's about to be voted on, bulldozers are not rolling down the street later this afternoon, okay? So, there will be more votes at council. But, okay, so, there's a motion on the table for item 7 AR, Part 1, which is a resolution authorizing application for a certificate of approval for the demolition of the old court building and the old police headquarters. We had a motion and a second on that. Any discussion on that item?
That means that it's all shot.
Yeah. Well, we're going to vote on the jail in a moment.
So, if I vote yes on this.
You're not, not affecting the jail one way or the other?
Okay.
Okay. Correct. Or the smoke stack. All right. This is, this is to apply for a certificate of approval regarding the police headquarters and municipal court building. Any further discussion? Seeing none, cast your votes. Passes unanimously. Okay. Now, item 7 AR, this is the application for the jail and smoke stack. Any discussion on that?
So, if we vote, sorry.
Mm-hmm.
If we vote yes on this, we are voting to?
To apply for a demolition permit for the jail and smoke stack.
Got it. Thank you.
Okay. All right, any further discussion? Okay, seeing none, cast your votes. Fails four to five.
Did that, if you vote no, then you're going to save the jail, right?
Yes. Okay. All right, there you go.
Uh, that leaves us to no action being taken. We need, uh, voting the affirmative to move it on or defer it.
Right, it's, it's no action taken. So, if no action's taken today, it'll, potentially could be redocketed sometime, or jail sits.
So, so, I mean, this item doesn't continue to appear on the agenda naturally. It is now removed because it has been defeated. Correct. Okay. All right. Well, uh, that leaves the rest of the consent docket, um, except for the item previously deferred, and now item AR, which has been handled. Uh, we had no further presentations or anything that anyone wanted to discuss, so I would entertain a motion for the items. Got a motion, second for all of the other items on the agenda, consent docket. Uh, any discussions? Seeing none, all in favor? Councilman Cooper?
Hi.
We need to, yeah, there you go. Passes unanimously. All right. Moving on to the concurrence docket, we have items A through Q that we could take with one motion.
Move the items.
Got a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none. Cast your votes. Passes unanimously. Item nine, items requiring separate votes. We'll start with 9A. This is, uh, they're all planning commission cases. This is, uh, an ordinance on final hearing that was recommended for approval, uh, at 1205 South Mustang Road, going from R3M to O2. Councilman McAtee.
Yes, thank you, Your Honor. Is the applicant present?
Yes.
Could you come forward?
Uh, yes. Is this Wesley Duffel? Welcome. If you wouldn't mind stating your name and address.
Sure. It's Wesley Duffel, 801 East Victoria Terrace, Mustang.
If you'd give the council and myself a brief overview of what you're intending to do and pay specific attention to the ingress and egress onto Mustang Road and the traffic that, that will be created by this.
Say it one more time. I'm sorry. What'd you say?
If you'd give the council an overview of what you're intending to do and pay specific attention to how you're going to handle traffic getting in and out off of Mustang Road.
Uh, yes, so, um, we actually are planning to put a, uh, dental office on the, I guess that would be the northeast corner of that lot. Um, we're actually planning on doing a, uh, lot split, uh, at 80 feet from Southwest 11th, going back to the south, um, and, and having a, uh, drive entry, um, exactly, I think it's 100 foot from the center of the Southwest 11th Drive. So, that would be the question about coming in and out of the area. The lot split is to, um, possibly have further development on the south side of the property, which will actually be approximately one and a half acres. I've already applied for the, uh, lot split, and it's been, uh, approved, uh, but we also have applied for the drive, which has been approved, um, by the city, not by, uh, Department of, I guess, uh, Department of Transportation or ODOT, one of the two, whoever it goes to next, I believe. Um, so, that would be the, the in and the out going 100 feet off of the Southwest 11th Drive onto Mustang Road. As far as the other part of development, uh, we don't have, uh, an idea of what's going to go there. It will be obviously O2-zone property, so it would be office of some sort. Um, my idea, I will own both of the lots. My idea is to, um, keep it in the office state, not to switch it to a commercial, um, like a C zoning. Uh, it'll still be O zoning. Um, does that answer your questions?
Has anybody signed up, Francis?
Nobody else.
There were no protests at planning commission unless the council has some questions. I move for approval.
Okay, motion and a second. Any discussions? Seeing none, cast your votes. Passes unanimously. This brings us to item 9B1. This is at, uh, 5101 North Pennsylvania Avenue, going from SPOD 903, um, O2 and R1 to PUD 1715. Councilman has left the building, but we have several people who've signed up to speak, so maybe we'll start without him. Um, and, uh, usually, I don't know who all is who here, but usually, we like to start with the applicant, so, uh, whoever is most appropriate there.
David Box, 522 Call Core Drive, here on behalf of the applicant. Because of the nature of the case and the amount of interest, should we perhaps wait for councilmen to?
We'll go check on him.
Okay. I'd just hate for him to miss out on any of this discussion.
We need to get going. There he is, okay. Here we go.
So, again, David Box, 522 Call Core Drive, on behalf of the applicant. Uh, this is a PUD at the corner of Northwest Highway in, in North Pennsylvania. I've got a host of people that will be, uh, speaking. I hope everybody can see the exhibits. If not, let me know, and we can certainly rearrange these. Before I talk about the details of this, I want to introduce two people, uh, that will talk about the development, what it means for this, for this city. Uh, first will be Everett Dobson, and then I'll have Ryan McNeil speak. I also have other people in attendance to answer other questions. I've got Terry Haynes, who's the civil engineer for this project, as well as Todd Butler, who is the traffic engineer, uh, for this project. So, with that, I will turn it over to Mr. Dobson.
Thank you, David. Uh, my comments are going to be relatively brief. I'm going to tell you who I am and what my involvement in this project is. Uh, first of all, my name is Everett Dobson. Uh, as of a couple of weeks ago, I have lived in Oklahoma all of my 60 years. I'd like to now maybe introduce my daughter, Haley, who is with me today. She is a recent graduate of the Gaylord School of Journalism, the University of Oklahoma, and has joined the team to work on Oak, as we refer to it today. Um, I've known Ryan McNeil pretty much his whole life, uh, and his family. Um, we've worked together on other projects in the past. Um, Ryan introduced me to this concept, oh, it's hard to believe, it's been probably five or six years ago, and quite honestly, I didn't know what a mixed-use development, real estate development project was at the time. I've done a crash course on it since then, um, including going to markets throughout the country, some larger, some smaller than Oklahoma City, and really got to understand what mixed-use really is all about. Um, we went to a project in Alpharetta, Georgia, a few years ago, and quite frankly, I was blown away at what I saw, uh, to the point where I said, "We can do this in Oklahoma City." Uh, this market is ready for this. I've lived in Oklahoma City, um, you know, better part of 20-plus years. Uh, it's, uh, Oklahoma City has gone through a transformation thanks to MAPS, thanks to this council, thanks to other citizens of this, of this citi, of this city, and I think Oklahoma City is ready for this project. Uh, it is, uh, a substantial project. Um, I'm personally putting a sizable amount of risk capital at, at work here. Um, I can also tell you that there are some leading national brands that are prepared to come to this project that otherwise are, are currently not in Oklahoma and otherwise wouldn't be, be coming to Oklahoma, and I think that's a significant point that, that we need to point out as well. I am particularly excited about the project because I think it's a transformational project. Um, I think it will create an environment where people, and this is what I saw in Alpharetta, Georgia, it's a, it's an environment where people can live, work, and play, all in a community within a neighborhood. And that's, to me, is the sweet spot of what this city, uh, should be about. And that's, to me, is the sweet spot of what this city should be about and frankly, what is a sweet spot of real estate in general and particularly retail and restaurants as we see it across the country. So with that, I am thrilled to be here today. I am very happy that you're taking this matter under consideration in a timely manner. I do, I'm going to be around all day for questions. We have a lot of information, and Ryan's going to talk about the project in more detail. But with that, thanks again for your consideration. If you have questions, I'll be glad to answer. Thank you.
Before I have Mr. McNeil up here, I want to give a little bit of history of this site. In 2016, Mr. McNeil hired me to go rezone the hard corner. At the time, it was the old Salvation Army building. It was not the land that encompasses the two office buildings that are there. At the time that we came through with that rezoning, staff, as well as Planning Commission, really pushed Ryan to do something better because of the importance of this corner. The thought that it was going to be a small development just in the corner, in their opinion, was not what the comp plan called for. The comprehensive plan designates this as urban medium, as well as designating this as a retail node. And so they pushed Ryan. This needs to be better. This is too prominent of a corner for something so small. So Ryan took that task to heart, and he went out to acquire other pieces of property to imagine what this development could become. And so with that, I'll turn it over to Ryan and let him walk you through that process.
Good morning, Mayor. City Manager Freeman, council members, my name is Ryan McNeil. I was born, as I was thinking about this, this week, just a few steps from where I stand today, at St. Anthony's Hospital. Like Everett, I've spent most of my life in Oklahoma, most of that in Oklahoma City. It is a special moment for our project to present to you this morning. It's a special moment for me personally. I am the head of Veritas Development. And like David said, more than 10 years ago, it was the spring of 2009, I had just moved back from a stint in California where I spent time working with Sonic Drive-In as a franchisee. I began to get involved in commercial real estate development, and I started to study mixed-use projects. When I moved back, I noticed that a sign went up on that corner that David mentioned, and I saw an opportunity to start an assemblage process that has lasted 10 years. And so now we have around 20 acres assembled, contiguous acres, to do something, dream big and do something special. So this is an important moment for our project, but it's also an important moment, as I see it, for Oklahoma City, and I'll explain why. The retail market, as most of you know, has dramatically changed over the last 10 years. And retail is the thrust of the revenue engine for Oklahoma City, like many cities in the state. And having the right retail product is essential, and staying ahead of the retail changes is essential for that engine. So this is the most important retail asset, not in my opinion, but by your own studies, that the city has done for the city of Oklahoma City, and I would say in the state. So knowing that, back to 2009, when we started to make an effort on that corner, it began with a small acre, and then it grew to three acres. And in 2017, it grew to 10 acres, and on and on. And as we began to see that canvas enlarging, we began to see a special opportunity to present something, not to you, frankly, but to the neighborhood. And we saw an opportunity, based on what I had seen in California, that's required there for developers in other parts of the country. We saw best practices that we wanted to apply into the neighborhood. So we had a vision that began to rise, but we wanted to take that vision to the neighbors. And we wanted them to be vested. We wanted their voice to be heard. And so, beginning in 2011, and I can explain later as needed, but continuing until just last year, and even Thursday night of last week, we've held dozens and dozens of private one-on-one gatherings and formal meetings to enlist the neighbors to get their fingerprints on a dream. And so what I present to you today is not my dream, but it's the neighborhood's dream. And I can show you that in process as we go, if there are questions. But it's a dream that I think augments and speaks really to taking the viability of the retail product to the next level in a project that does not exist in Oklahoma. It was mentioned earlier about the vacancy rate. I think that article mostly focused on office that ran earlier this week in The Oklahoman. But really, that speaks to what I'm here to talk to you about today, and that's obsolescence. If you read that article, it talked about product that was built before 1985, and all kinds of formats within real estate have changed since then. And the format that we, as Everett said, toured the country, looked at projects around the country, the best-in-class retail products aren't just on islands by themselves, they're part of an integrated mixed-use environment where people can live, people can work, people visit from out of state and stay in a hotel. And what we saw that really elevated other mixed-use projects above even their peers was a very highly intentional program to bring community events to a public square. It's like a quasi-public square. It's a private space, but it's managed and it's curated like a public square. So that activation, a green space at the heart of these mixed-use projects around the country, where the community gets more vested and more invested in this sense of place. And so it really, frankly, turns its back, in a strange kind of paradoxical way, away from retail and what all of the tenants would require that you do. And it puts the social element at the center, and the result is a higher sales per square foot result for the tenants. But the tenants, you have to kind of lead the tenants that direction. They don't individually just run that way. And so we've had this phrase around this square idea, as we've studied the ULI reports, common origins lead to common outcomes. And the cross-section, we see this in other open spaces in the state with Guthrie Green in Tulsa, The Gathering Place, people from all different parts and all different walks of life gather in this intersection of life. And we see that as a very vital social good that this product brings. But it's galvanized and is supported by this private element. And so we've been very intentional about walking that dream through the neighborhood. They've gotten their fingerprints on it. The residents, The Temple, Benai to our south, they're here today, Mayfair Church. We began meeting with these folks in 2011, '12, '13, '14, '15, The Temple in 2016, and so on. And so we're delighted to be here and excited to talk more, and I'll come back and answer any questions you have about the project.
Thank you, Ryan. So I'd like to talk a little bit about the PUD, and as Ryan mentioned, he's had dozens and dozens of meetings with the neighbors, in part because there were two separate covenants at issue that existed on various pieces of this land that required, outside of the city process, but through a private process, we get those covenants released. The covenants released required 60% of the people who lived within that particular plat to sign off on that. And so it afforded the opportunity for Ryan to meet the neighbors, build relationships, and talk about the project. First, he had to start in the Wyomans Fourth Edition, which is the land north of 50th, west of Penn. And what you might hear from Penn Square Mall, from what I understand, is they believe that my client has perhaps done something improper when meeting with these people. So I want to clear that before they get up. What Mr. McNeil was forced to do was to incentivize people to come and sign off on the release of the covenants. The reason being, when you have archaic covenants similar to this, it's hard for people to get excited or be willing to talk about something that they don't believe impacts them. But because the state statutes require 60% of the people to sign off on it, we had to find a way to incentivize them. And so what Mr. McNeil did was offer an inconvenience fee for anybody that was willing to come, listen to the project, and sign off on the change of the covenants. Explicitly within that, they in no way waived any right whatsoever to come and protest the municipal process, which is what we're doing now. All of them also received notice from the city. And so it's two separate processes that we're discussing. But what it afforded us was the opportunity to talk about the city process through the covenant release. So when you look at the PUD, this is a PUD that was one that took a lot of time, not only to draft, but to also work through the city process, through Planning Commission. When we filed this, we intentionally set it off at a date that it was later than it would normally have come, so that we could sit down with planning staff, development services staff, Public Works, utilities, traffic, everybody, knowing that this is a sizable project at a key intersection in Oklahoma City. And so only once we believed we had buy-off from all of those departments did we finally move towards Planning Commission. Again, all the while, meeting with neighbors as we move through the process. One of the most important features, I believe, in this development is what you undoubtedly see in the site plan, is the rerouting of 50th Street. Anybody that's driven up Penn towards Northwest Highway understands that you've got a serious problem with traffic as you try to get to 50th because of the median that exists south of Northwest Highway. There is no direct access from Penn to 50th. So instead, what people do is either drive through the private parking lot at the signalized intersection, or they cut down at, I believe it's 46th, and drive through that neighborhood, so forcing traffic into the neighborhood. So what we intend to do is to reroute 50th to the location where it needs to go, that being the location that already has a fully signalized intersection. And again, because that's a section-lined road and because it's a significant change, we knew that we needed to get ahead of this thing. And so we have been meeting with Eric Winger, head of Public Works, as well as traffic management staff, for years on this to ensure that every step of the way, they had support for this or didn't have any big questions or problems, because if they did, we'd be able to pivot and solve those. I believe that, on balance, this will actually help traffic for the reasons I just stated. Now, if you're northbound on Penn, you will have a means to actually go west and get onto 50th Street. And so we believe that it'll actually be a net positive. So what we did in the PUD is we broke it into four separate tracks. And the four separate tracks, Ms. Lincoln, could you put that on the screen, please? It's an exhibit to the PUD. It's in the staffs. It's not in those slides. It's the city's slides. Okay. So what we did was we intentionally created four separate tracks so that we could have separate development regulations within each track if issues came up. And so what we have... What it allowed us to do when there were issues, and I'm going to start with the track that's down here next to The Temple. The Temple has very specific concerns as it relates to height of buildings and design... There it is. So Track 3. The Temple has very specific concerns, and through this process, because of the PUD, we were able to come up with agreements on design, setbacks, height, all of those things. Track 4, which is the one that perhaps most impacts the residential folks, at the time of Planning Commission, we were seeking a 0-foot setback. It was intended to have the parking garage on the property line. That came from the round of neighborhood meetings. What we discovered through those meetings was there was a desire that the neighbors wanted the buildings to serve as a buffer rather than have a building and then a strip of land. Well, there was one particular neighbor that really kept desiring to have a 10-foot setback, and at the request of Councilman Cooper and the neighbors, Mr. McNeil has given that additional 10-foot setback in that southwest corner of Track 4. So when you look at the PUD, on balance, it is largely the same uses due out, is a very retail-centric development, but it also includes an important piece of multifamily. And so as Ryan said and Everett said, you could live, work, and play. You'll have the ability to have offices, retail, restaurants, and apartments. So I want to focus a little bit on the comprehensive plan. As you know, this is a fairly new comprehensive plan. It was one that had a lot of community involvement, spent a lot of years drafting and finally implementing. And so as I mentioned earlier, it's not only urban medium, but it's also a retail node. And so I'll read you from the staff report what urban medium designations mean. And I'm quoting from, it's going to be page 1 of the June 13 staff report, but it's also contained in your packet. Priorities for the UM areas include retail, infill developments on vacant lots, rehabilitation of underutilized property, and development that supports revitalization of distressed neighborhoods. And then, again, it's a retail node. And so what that says is, "Retail nodes and corridors seek to develop a robust retail sector to generate sales tax levels and growth to fund quality services for the city and to meet needs for goods and services to enhance the quality of surrounding neighborhoods." Staff has recommended approval of this because it conforms with the comprehensive plan. So when we went to the Planning Commission, we had a positive recommendation from staff. And at Planning Commission, there were a handful of citizens that were there. There were the folks I mentioned that I butt tracked for. But there was like three or four. A project of this size at this intensity, I think that is a remarkable accomplishment that Ryan was able to get widespread buy-in from the neighbors. It's a lot easier for people to come when they're not happy with the project, as this council knows, than it is when they're supportive. We have a lot of support. People contact Ryan on a weekly basis asking for status updates, when is this moving forward, because they believe that this will add and inject a significant benefit to this area. So at Planning Commission, they took a vote, and there was a unanimous recommendation from Planning Commission to recommend approval of this project to you, the city council. After that time, again, June 13 is when we went to Planning Commission. On June 18, I was first contacted by a gentleman representing Penn Square Mall. Again, June 18. We're here today, and we're in mid-August. Ever since June 18, we have begged, we have pleaded, we have done everything that I know how to do to meet with Simon and the representatives. I have been appearing before this city council for 12 years now. I have never once had a case in which there was protest in which the protester or the representatives flat-out refused to meet. I have asked no less than 15 times to meet. I know Councilman Cooper has asked that they meet with us, and at every step along the way, they have refused to meet with us. I think it's fairly obvious why they do that. I think their protest can be boiled down to a fear of competition. But luckily for you, you are empowered to make decisions based upon policies and based upon comprehensive plans. But with that said, I want to walk through a little bit about what their protest is getting at. So if you read their protest letter dated August 8, the first bullet point they state is that there is a nonconformity with the municipal code. And they base that nonconformity on a lack of a table that the municipal code PUD ordinance requires. Now, I will tell you, in the 12 years of doing this, I've never seen a PUD that has had this table. And so it took, this is PUD 1715. So I guess it took 1,715 PUDs for this ordinance to be brought up. So with that said, I do want to note that on August 12, we did file a table with development services. And so if there is a defect, I believe it has been cured, but I'd like Mr. Jordan to address that, if possible.
That basically is a technical format requirement in the code. I think it's routinely ignored. It's not a legal defect, and I wouldn't rely on that as a reason to deny this. I would look at traffic and things like that if you wanted to consider denying it. But basically, just leaving the table out really doesn't make that much difference.
And it's now been cured. We filed the table. And again, it is, when we draft these PUDs, we pull from the city website the city's form for the PUD. And it's worth noting that the form for the PUD doesn't have the table. So if there is a requirement of a table, it has never once been enforced by this city council. So point number one has been cured. Point number two, developer's traffic study. It's worth noting that in 2016, the city council passed the impact fee ordinance. In so doing, the city council and the planning commission waived the requirement that developers have to do traffic studies. Before that, all developers were required to produce a traffic study, and we ended up in a situation where there were some inequities occurring, where the last developer to an intersection was the one that had to pay the full freight to fix the traffic problems created by the other three developments. And so the equitable way to do that, at the time, what was believed, and I think has played out, was to do an impact fee. And so now the city is the group in charge of studying traffic on a global basis. Developers no longer are required to submit traffic studies, and instead, at building permit, pay impact fees based upon the type of use, the intensity of use, the square footage of the use. And so I think I'm correct in stating, but I would ask you to ask your staff, that the fact that we submitted a traffic study means that we actually went above and beyond. fact that we submitted a traffic study means that we actually went above and beyond what could have ever been required of us. Now, we did it as a matter, of course, because, again, we're rerouting 50th Street, we wanted to see what traffic patterns were going to be. But all along the way, we've been in conversations with Public Works, and not once has Public Works raised any questions or concerns about the findings of our study. Now, they may mention the fact that the site plans have changed, and the PUD has changed, and so Mr. Todd Butler, who's a traffic engineer, is here to answer any questions you might have. But a summation of his testimony would be, nothing about the changes in the PUD would alter his analysis or his opinions contained within his findings. And I just, I think I'd be remiss in not noting that I find it a bit strange that a mall, perhaps the biggest traffic generator in the city, is complaining about traffic. Presumably, the mall benefits from that traffic, because those people and cars are likely going to the mall or something else there at Penn and Northwest Expressway. So it's strange to me that the mall would be complaining about traffic, when I actually think we help traffic, because we get people onto 50th Street. And if you think about traffic problems that might be created, I'd be hard-pressed to see how traffic problems could be created on the northeast corner, how it would impact the mall. If anything, it would impact us. And the gentleman behind me, who are putting up significant capital, I assure you, have studied this, and wouldn't be doing so if they believed they were creating problems in which the public couldn't get to this site. Next, they mentioned the CE 979. It's a closing application, right here on the hard corner of Northwest Highway in Penn. Now, that's not before you, but they may mention that it will come before you, and the staff recommends denial. All that is accurate. It will come before you at some point in the future, I'm not sure when. Staff recommended denial initially because of a drainage technicality. It's my understanding, and our engineer Terry Haynes is here and can confirm that that has been worked out, but because it hasn't gone back to Planning Commission, they haven't revised their staff report. They won't do so until we are ready to go to Planning Commission, and we're working through some underlying ownership issues. But even without that little sliver, the project can still move forward. So not being voted on here today has nothing to do with your consideration, but because they addressed it, I wanted to visit about it. Number four, Plan OKC and no collaboration with Penn Square area property owners. It appears that they're concerned that the city hasn't reached out to the mall to form a collaborative process. I'm not sure what we could say to that, other than I'm not sure that the mall has reached out to the city either. Five, a PUD non-conformity with developer representations. I think this could best be stated as a, perhaps, a bit of confusion as to how the process works. The site plan has changed. It's changed because of all of the meetings that Ryan and his development team have had with the community. It's changed because of meetings we've had with planning staff, and it's changed because of meetings we've had with Planning Commission members. All the changes have been for the better. The PUD site plan isn't what drives and governs development. It's the master design statement. The master design statement has held fairly true to where it started. Now, there's been tweaks, based upon comments from staff, based upon comments from Planning Commission, but the general framework and the general regulations have remained largely the same. It's worth noting that this process doesn't stop today. In terms of public input and public meetings, the process will have to go back through a public hearing process through Planning Commission. Because our PUD requires a specific plan, we will have to, before any building permit could be issued, file a specific plan application with Development Services, to show that the building that we're seeking to build conforms to the PUD, conforms to the development regulations contained therein, and they will place that on the Planning Commission docket for a public hearing. So additional scrutiny will occur with this. Additionally, the second item you have on your agenda today is a closing application to close various pieces of right-of-way, including 50th. Well, we're not going to be able to go and actually vacate and do those things until we dedicate, which will come on the docket, 50th Street. And so you will have several more opportunities to see this project before anything gets built. Lastly, the protest from the mall cites to an Exhibit F contained within their letter. Exhibit F is a Oklahoma City retail plan. And when you read the retail plan cited by Simon, in large part, I read it as a glowing recommendation for the project that we put forth today. Of note, on page seven of this, it says that "The city should partner with Simon Property Groups and other area property owners to develop a plan for retail expansion of the regional retail node." Well, that is exactly what this project does. It is expanding that regional retail node. The reason why those very first conversations we had with planning staff and Planning Commission demanded that we come back with something better was because of the importance of this intersection. And with one small development on the hard corner, it wasn't going to fully utilize and fully develop the type of retail tax dollars that we need at an intersection this important. Well, what we have for you now is compliant with the comp plan, compliant with this retail plan, and is going to allow this corner to realize the full potential of sales tax revenue, and provide a wonderful, wonderful development that is sweeping across the nation. These are the type of developments that people want to go to. The retail consumers' experiences have changed, and what they're demanding is this. And so with that, I'd be happy to answer any additional questions. Again, I've got engineers of multiple varieties, the development team, and we'd ask for your approval.
Thank you. We have several people who've signed up to speak, so maybe we'll get into that before we move to council questions, if that's okay.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm Richard Kelly, I'm Senior Director of Engineering with Simon. If I may, may I allow our council to speak first?
Sure, sure. Yeah, however you want to structure it.
Robert Sheets, 3100 Rosewood Lane, and downtown for my office. First of all, the Simon Property Group is not against this project. We see it as beneficial, beneficial to the city. What we're against is what we feel is walking into this without a full understanding of how it's going to affect the traffic, which the retail plan of the city says is one of the busiest intersections in the city. I mean, if you've ever driven down Northwest Expressway, it's not a very pleasant experience sometimes. If you've ever driven north on Penn, when you get to the intersection of Northwest Expressway, it's not a very pleasant experience. Mr... Well, it was said that, why are we against traffic? We're not against traffic. We like traffic. We like to have people coming to the malls area, mall area. But traffic can get to the point where it makes people not want to come. And that's what we are talking about here. We are not against the project, but we are against walking blind into it. There was a traffic study from 2017. We have an outside consultant who reviewed that traffic study, and feels that there may be some problems with it. We would like to have a traffic study now. And, you know, I understand, we have the impact fee and things such as this, but this is not a small project. This is almost another Penn Square Mall on the same, in the same area. An area which the retail plan of this city says is one of the most important retail areas in the city. That is why the retail plan says that development of this track and other things in the area, the city should, it says the city should engage Penn Square Mall and other people in the area to discuss this. That wasn't done. As far as meeting with the developers, we're not against meeting with them, but right now, we're just getting so many information we need to do a decent traffic study. We don't want to meet until we're ready to say, what are the problems, and how can we mitigate this? I understand, the impact plan, but this is not the kind of thing you want to build and see what happens. You know, one of the things that's going to be discussed by our traffic person is, the level of service on Northwest Expressway is rapidly going to Level F. Well, F in a traffic study means the same thing as it means in school. And if you're getting an F in school, then you study harder. That's all we're asking for on the traffic. And we feel like, okay, the tables that were left out, well, I would say it's in the municipal code. If it's not going to be enforced, maybe it should be repealed. But one of the things that that table can do is give a traffic engineer a chance to figure out density and things such as that, and how that will affect traffic. Also, what a traffic study can do is tell you how to mitigate. And it doesn't necessarily mean add another lane, or do this or that. It might mean redoing your lights, so that you'll have different intervals of people coming. I mean, I'm not a traffic engineer, but I would like, on behalf of Penn Square Mall, and for that matter, Oaks, and every other retail person or facility in this area. If you drive down Northwest Expressway, how many retail restaurants things are there? You drive north on Penn, how many retail things are there besides Penn Square Mall? How many restaurants depend on traffic that you can get to the facility? So we're not talking about just Penn Square, we're not talking about the Oaks, we're talking about that entire corridor, which this city has designated as the most important, or at least one of the most important. So all we're asking for at this point is, let's take time to do a comprehensive traffic study. If we're going to be going down to Level F on level of service, then perhaps we should listen to the traffic engineers on how to mitigate that. That's what we're looking for. Now, as far as the, what is it? CE 979, which wants to close a city easement. It's also called the site triangle. What that means is, it gives you sight from Northwest Expressway over to Penn, so you can see traffic coming, and that would be a safety issue to close that off and vacate that. And there's a letter in the packet that we gave you, telling you why that is a safety issue. Not only is it a safety issue, going back to that annoying municipal code, it's not allowed. Because one of the things that they want to do when they close that off is build two buildings, I believe three and two stories tall. City code says, it can't be taller than 24 inches. So, you know, that is a problem. And, okay, maybe they don't need that, but they want it. And what you're voting on here is really an incomplete HUD, because part of what they want has not even been heard by the Planning Commission. And it's not because of stalling by us, it's because they requested that it be moved to October 10. Well, if you move that to October 10, what is wrong with taking the time to do a legitimate, real traffic study with mitigating information like they used to do before they did any development? Because we're not dealing with just any development here. So, are we afraid of competition? No. Are we against this project? No. But we're against not taking the time to figure out what we're doing, and how it's going to affect the city, how it's going to affect your retail corridor, which you've designated Penn Square, all the way up to Class and Curve. How's it going to affect it? Is it going to make traffic such that people quit coming? That can happen. And we have two people to speak, Rich Kelly, who's the Senior Civil Engineer for Simon Properties, and then we have Eric Trippi, who's with GHD, an outside consultant, who has looked at the 2017 study, and also has some suggestions, but we don't have the information that he can give us concrete mitigating ideas at this point. But that's all we're asking for, is let's figure it out before we build it. With that, I'll give it to...
Yeah, feel free to introduce the other members of your team that you want to speak.
This is Rich Kelly.
Good morning. Thank you for this opportunity to present to the council. I am the Director of Engineering at Simon. We are the entity that has ownership and management control of Penn Square Mall. As you know, Penn Square Mall is located catty-corner to the proposed rezone property to the northeast. I wanted to do an exercise, just so we all understand the magnitude of the development that we're talking about today, so bear with me. But if you think about that aerial photo that was shown of Penn Square Mall, it had the mall shown in the aerial there. Penn Square Mall is 1 million square feet. So think about that in the context of 1 million, 1-square-foot blocks. Blocks like we played with as a kid. Stack those on top of each other, five levels high. So now we have a 200,000-square-foot footprint, five levels high, 1 million square feet. Take the top level off. You've got four levels, 800,000 square feet. That's less than what we are talking about putting on this site here. On a tract that is one-third the size of the property of Penn Square Mall, so 17 acres. 800,000 square feet on 17 acres, mixed-use, that is a very intense development. Now, think about the traffic that we associate with Penn Square. Take that amount of traffic, take about 80% of it, funnel it through primarily a single-access point onto a 17-acre parcel. So if you think about the plan that they presented, there's only one full-access point onto this property, and it will be off of Pennsylvania, at the real line 50th Street. There's a right-in, right-out that will be added on Northwest Expressway. Compare that to Penn Square Mall. Penn Square Mall has three full signalized access points that allow full access, as well as two additional partial-access points, so five versus two. Not counting the residential streets, which I don't think any of us want to see a lot of traffic coming into this property on the residential street. Our concern is that that volume of traffic, added to what's there now, as well as the growth in traffic over the next six or seven years, is going to severely degrade the operation of the intersection of Penn and Northwest, which is the primary access and thoroughfare by which our customers and employees access Penn Square Mall. All we're seeking is that you consider what is going to happen to that intersection. And I've got a graphic that I would like to hand out. Mr. Mayor, if you'll allow me to approach the council, I'd like to hand out a graphic that you can pass around, and then I'm going to ask our traffic engineer to kind of get into the details, but some numbers to think about. This development, by their own traffic report, traffic study, will generate 18,000 cars a day. 1,100 new cars passing through the intersection of Northwest Expressway in Pennsylvania during the evening rush hour, during the period between, say, 5:00 and 6:00 p.m. That is a lot of traffic. And what their traffic engineer has stated in the report from 2017, I want to read this, and then I will step aside. It says, "The results of the intersection capacity analysis conducted indicate the adjacent signalized intersection at Northwest Expressway and Pennsylvania Avenue is expected to have long delays and low levels of service." Hard stop. It does not go on to say, okay, how can we improve that? How do we accommodate that additional traffic? There's no recommendation. So with that, I'm going to step aside, but I would like to pass out these graphics, if you would just hand them around. And I'd like, appreciate the opportunity for our traffic engineer, Eric Trippi, to explain in a little bit more detail our concerns regarding traffic.
Okay.
Thank you, Mayor Holt. Council members, good morning. Again, my name is Eric Trippi. I am a civil engineer, traffic transportation engineer for the global engineering consulting firm, GHD. What you see being passed out in front of you is what I'll be talking about. We also have a graphic here up front, which I can also speak to. In my career, we do traffic impact studies to determine what is the impact of a development on area roadways. And these impact studies take, project traffic from a future development, assign it to area roadways, assess the impact of the road and intersections, and then determine, assess what the impact is. Do we need to upgrade? Do we need to create mitigation measures to fix a problem, especially if these extra traffic volumes added to the road cause the intersections and roadways to degrade? We speak in terms of level of service. Level of service again is like a school report card, A through F. Once you get to a level of service F, that level of service is associated with delay. Delay is, when you get to level of service F, delay is 80 seconds or more of delay per vehicle at an intersection. So we were asked to look at the traffic study that was submitted on August of 2017. We did basically just a peer review. We looked at the intersection, or looked at the study. We, upon completion of review of the study, we had some concerns. These concerns, we illustrated on the document you have in front of you. And I'll just go briefly through some of the issues that we found. First issue on the upper right-hand side of the document is a note. And basically, Rich, just, Mr. Kelly just said this, "All approaches to the intersection are projected to operate at a level of service F in the 2025 total future PM peak hours." So we're talking 2025, that's when projected buildout at the time of the 2017 traffic study was completed. So they project that conditions in 2025 will degrade to level of service F. So that's over 80 seconds of delay on average per vehicle, if you think about that. In fact, in the report itself, it said that the delay was even going to exceed 80, such that they didn't report a number for it because it got to be that high. What are the implications of traffic when it gets to a condition of level of service F? Well, we've indicated on this document, if you look at the red cars from the traffic study that was submitted in 2017, we looked at how far the delays would be, or how far, I'm sorry, how far the backups would be on each approach to the intersection, per the traffic study in 2017. The furthest back you see are how far we're expecting these, or at least the projected backups will be. What happens when we have backups like this? Well, a couple of things. First of all, we call, we can have something called cycle failure, which means you've got to sit through an intersection through a couple of cycles before you can get all the way through it. That's typically what happens when we see levels of service that reach F for an intersection. But second of all, and probably even more important, is that when you have backups in through lanes, we have problems with that traffic blocking access to the turn lanes. And if we have signal phasing that has a special green arrow for left turns, you're not going to serve the people you need to serve because they can't get to the lane because traffic is backed up. On the other way, we may have so many left turners that they spill out into the through lanes and block the through vehicles, all which cuts down on the capacity of the intersection. So again, in 2025, the projections from the traffic study indicated that we'd be operating in that such condition, level of service F. Another concern we had was they were relocating 50th Street down to the existing signal on Pennsylvania, just south of Northwest Expressway. Currently, there is a left turn lane northbound on Pennsylvania that is very short. It may be able to handle two to three vehicles coming into the development. This is obviously a major entrance into the development because it is signalized, it's the only signalized access into the development. That left turn lane is not going to be sufficient to handle the traffic that is projected from the 2017 study into that, into that main entrance. It's just simply not long enough. And if we have the projected volumes that were shown in the report, we could see instances where that traffic is going to back up into the through lanes on northbound Penn and cause backups and further delays. Another concern obviously is, if that becomes an issue where people cannot get into that entrance, where are people going to go? Or if they can't get out of that entrance, they're going to use these residential streets. And there was traffic assigned to these streets, and I'm sure that's, it's not the most desirable fact to have a lot of residential, a lot of commercial vehicle traffic traveling through residential streets to avoid either that intersection of Northwest and Penn, or to avoid the signal at 50th, the relocated 50th Street. And as Rich, Mr. Kelly said, it does add a significant amount of traffic to the area roadways. Those are what you see. I just showed the peak hour volumes, on the projected peak hour volumes on each of the roadway approaches to the intersection. These are, again, peak hour volumes, so they're significant. So that concludes my presentation. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. The mayor has had to step out for a moment, and has asked me to fill in. So are there any questions of this gentleman here that you'd like to ask?
I have a quick question, but it's not really related to traffic. And that is, what is the expected retail footage on this project?
The maximum retail would be 350,000 square feet.
300 what?
350,000 square feet would be the maximum.
And then what's the square footage over at Penn Square?
Council member, the truer, more accurate figure would be closer to 225, 250 versus a million. So those other square foot are comprised of uses that help mitigate traffic practices, you know, to inflate traffic counts.
And then how many housing units?
450 is what's allowed in the PUD.
My question is, as far as how we can make sure this is a comparable type of development. And I know when I spoke with the developer, we talked about some things or retail that may, in some aspects, be in competition to, to the mall in itself. So are we able to figure out how to mitigate some of those similar types of retail that are in both spaces?
You know, I think what you're going to see in this development are retailers and restaurants and operators that would never be in a closed mall. And so we really don't see it as competition. We see it as an opportunity for the city to provide an avenue for retailers that aren't in market, aren't in state in some instances, to locate here. And much like the CVS and Walgreens, right? Like, they always locate on the same corners because having people in the same place generates the opportunity to have business for both. We don't see it as a competition.
Okay, I have here some citizens who wish to be here. Do you have any more comments before we hear the citizens?
No, unless there are specific questions of us.
And first up, Trent and Nancy Height.
If I could, Penn Square, just one comment. I want to make it very clear, we are interested in the traffic. We are interested in meeting with everybody, the city, the Oaks, everybody. We just want to have a meaningful meeting and not speculation. We want to have a meeting that has solutions to potential problems.
Thank you, sir. Trent and Nancy Height. If you would, give us your name and address as you come forward, and try to limit your comments to three minutes.
My name is Trent Height. This is my wife, Nancy. We live at 13116 Rock Canyon Road in Oklahoma City. Thank you for your time. We appreciate the opportunity to come before you and talk to you. Nancy and I both grew up in Oklahoma City, went to Oklahoma City schools. She graduated from Northwest, and I graduated from Northeast. And our children all graduated here in Oklahoma City. She bought the property in the northeast corner of 49th and Young, which borders on track four, the southwest corner of track four. She bought a home there as a single mother in 1994, and she's owned that property since then. It had a covenant at that time, which restricted the buildings to be no more than two stories tall. And, you know, to her, a covenant was like a marriage covenant. She thought that was a lifetime, and we found out that's not correct, and we understand that. And we think the project is, it's a great idea. But we don't know if they have a great plan. Plans, and it's gone through several meetings, and really, we don't know how to keep up with them and when they're going to be. We even canceled our vacation for one of the meetings that was in cancel. But the staff report that the city people put together for us, the citizens of Oklahoma City, and looking at this project, the staff report of March 28, 2019, on page 18 of 23, last paragraph, recommended, the PUD proposes building setbacks next to residential, which would limit buildings to 35 feet and two stories within 150 feet of the residentially zoned property. That's our home. At the last meeting, we found out, well, what the developer wants is a zero setback and 75-feet building in our backyard. If you can imagine, each of you folks have a home that you love, and you've worked for, and you've worked hard to pay for, that you wake up one morning and you've got a 75-foot building at your back fence? It just doesn't seem right. So we went to Councilman Cooper, and he was kind enough to take his time and return costs. And we explained our situation, and he went to the developer. And we appreciate that. Appreciate, appreciate your service. And we appreciate the service of all you folks taking your time. And they said, "Well, you have a point. So what we'll do is we'll give you 10 feet, and we will," we didn't want to do any kind of landscaping, "but we will put some landscaping, and we'll put some kind of trees in." But gosh, 75 feet. So I really don't have much more to say. I mean, I think they have a great idea. I don't know if they have a great plan. You know, if they have to have that much parking and that much storage, maybe they don't, maybe their plan's too big for the property they own. I don't know the answer to it. I just don't think, it just doesn't seem right to me that we and the other neighbors on 49th Street should have this kind of a building at the end of the property. So we thank you for your time. I didn't tell you Nancy was also a schoolteacher here in Oklahoma City. She taught the last year we had.
Thank you. Thank you.
We thank you for your time, and we thank you for your service. Thank you, Councilman Cooper.
Thank you. Bill Furquain? Nope. Okay. Bill Porch?
Yeah.
Oh, I was going, Bill, the first Bill or the second Bill? I don't know which is which. I'll take the Furquain. Okay, then Mr. Porch. All right.
Good morning. My name's Bill Furquain. I live at 15316 Shadow Mountain Road. My address is in Edmond, but I really do live in Oklahoma City. Pleasure meeting you, Mayor. You look much taller on TV than you do in person. I have a problem with the project. It looks like you've got a five-gallon bucket of milk, and you're trying to put it in a quart jar, and it's just not going to fit. One of the problems that we have with it is the overall height of the parking lot to go to 75 feet. I don't agree with that at all. I think it should remain at 35 feet. Every building in town, including your storm shelters, have setback rules. A 10-foot setback rule for a parking garage of that nature, to me, is not safe. You need a 25-foot setback so you can get a fire truck through there. Imagine if that parking lot caught on fire because some car caught on fire and it blew that building up. You can't get a fire truck in there. Another thing that I would suggest to you is the signage. I've not heard anybody talk anything about signage. I'd like to see the signs at the advertising level to be no more than 25 feet overall height, not to exceed 64 square feet, with a 30-foot site triangle separation at the corners, with a pylon cover on it, and landscaping, so it looks pretty. And I'm sure that, I'm sure you're going to do that. I would also suggest to you, I haven't heard anybody talk too much about what's going to happen to 50th Street from about Young's back to the west. Imagine we've got all these cars in there, and we've got something on fire. Now, I went through a house that burned about three years ago, and it's terrifying. You don't want that. I would like to see the setbacks to be 25 feet and address what's going to happen on 50th Street, to leave you enough room to get a fire truck through there in case of an emergency. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you. Boy, I really feel outclassed here. We've got a high-powered lawyer and big-time developer over here, high-powered lawyers there. I'm the little guy that owns the third property in, in the R3 section there, a duplex, family home that my parents bought in about, oh, 1963. And various daughters, my daughter Whitney and my daughter Mary Ann both lived there. It's kind of a family-type place. What, maybe I can give you a perspective from the viewpoint of a little guy in this. What I see is 50th Street wandering down through a shopping center, which, according to everybody's plan, is going to have a lot of traffic in it. Therefore, people will avoid it. They're going to close Barnes down to 49th Street, so people that want to avoid the whole mess can come down to Young's, you know, and cut down either 49th Street, 48th, 3th, or 47th to get over to Pennsylvania. This is going to turn those nice residential streets into a, into a real mess with, with high-speed traffic. People that are put out having to do it and kind of hitting the accelerator. Also, these row of duplexes along there in the R3 are really nice units. I know mine in particular is about 4,000 feet, on 2,000 feet per side. Backs up to the map here that I have, I'm kind of like Will... Backs up to the map here that I have, I'm kind of like Will Rogers, all I know is what I read in the paper, and if he didn't say that, he probably would have. But there's going to be seven restaurants in that, or eight restaurants in that area, and I can visualize dumpsters, grease traps, the whole deal along the wall that divides the two properties, as well as a big parking garage with lights on 24 hours a day. It's going to kind of destroy the, the peaceful enjoyment of, of the property. We, we have good tenants that live in there, that live there because it is a nice place to live, and kind of off the beaten path. This whole deal looks kind of like a size 12-foot and a size nine shoe. There's just too much of it to fit in there, and the pictures that have been provided by everyone, they, nobody's mentioned that, that they're talking about 400 apartments. That is going to be a substantial amount of traffic in and of itself. And I don't know what the rent will run on those, or where they intend to get their market, but I do know that that's going to be quite a problem in itself. We have a minor crime problem in there now, because the apartment's to the south of us, that we seem to be on a regular route that a new tenant moves in, the first thing that happens is they get their car broken into and inspected to see if there's anything worth stealing. We've taken that up with the, with the major at Will Rogers Police Department there. I think they've increased the patrol over there. But I could probably live with the main part of this thing, but that tentacle that runs over into the, into the residential district there in Track Four, that my property backs up to, looks like kind of an add-on and an afterthought. I get, the office building back there has really been a good neighbor. They, you don't hear anything of them quitting time. It's just about empty, so the whole neighborhood is, is peaceful again. If we have a new shopping center move in down there, we're going to have, and with all the activities they're talking about, planning the common area and all this and that going on down there, you have a lot of people coming in, going out, and a lot of number of them, I think, will be zooming down 49th Street and disturbing the, the general peace and tranquility of the, of the property. It's a, traffic around there is, on the expressway and on Pennsylvania, I've lived in that property myself, is, has a tendency to be a mess, especially around the holidays. Pennsylvania is just absolutely a steel path with cars lined up there, and Northwest Highway is most of the time anyway. I think maybe the, maybe this will be a great benefit. I see a lot of available signs up and down any major street, office space and apartments that are crying for tenants. I don't really see the need for any of it, but like I said, I could probably live with Tracks One, Two, and Three, since I don't really back up to them and, and get all the, the attention and activity that it's going to go on with these things. Eight restaurants probably operate until 10, 11 o'clock at night. We get a wing stop in there on game day. We're going to have people watching football and raising cane and everything. It just seems like something that, that shouldn't be inflicted on the, on the people that live along that R3 and in the adjoining neighborhoods. As far as the meetings and discussions, I had a five-minute discussion with a developer just before this meeting. That's pretty much it. I haven't seen or heard anything from anybody on this deal prior to this. We've been to the Planning Commission meetings. Planning Commission liked it, but I don't want to insult anybody, but I think the Planning Commission would okay an anthill in a graveyard if a developer brought it in. They don't seem to, to really get into it and look at the general overall activity that's going to be generated by the thing. Like I said, I could live with, with the rest of it, but that Track Four, I'd like to see go away, so that, so that my property and the property that's owned by a number of those folks along there doesn't get adversely affected. So, anyway, I appreciate your time and interest in this deal. One thing totally, probably off the point, when you're getting into Maps Four, doing up the goodies, literally and figuratively, throw a bone to the animal shelter. Those people do good work out there, and we ought to play the Oklahoma standard for our four-legged friends as well as for our citizens. But I appreciate your time and your interest. Thank you.
Throw a bone to the animal shelter. Haven't heard that one yet. That's good. Councilman Cooper, you want to, we're done with people who've signed up to speak.
So I'm going to surprise everybody today, and I'm really not going to speak.
Okay, great. Is there anyone else? Oh.
But I've invited people to speak. Gotcha. I would like to hear, and you can determine who should come first, but I've invited Public Works and Planning to come speak, whoever would like to speak first, because what I really would like to hear is more about the process from the city staff perspective. So, yeah.
Jeff Butler, interim planning director. Did you want me to start with a certain aspect of it, or?
Yeah, I think first and foremost, can you talk just about the, you know, you just take this where you want to, because I have, I have questions, but I just want to hear more about the planning process that this underwent? What, if any, concerns you now have based on what you've heard, if any?
Okay. The planning process, it, it started a long time ago. It, it was heard for the first time on June 13th by the Planning Commission, and as was mentioned, it, it has a couple of, of subsidiary, the, the street closures, but the main PUD was heard and was unanimously approved by the Planning Commission. There's, as has been stated, quite a bit of outreach to the, to the neighborhoods. In terms of concerns, the Planning Commission, it was, it was a lengthy hearing, and many of the people that were here spoke as well. The Planning Commission was, was very involved. The chair was very involved in this particular application and working with the developer. The, some of the concerns, the specific details, such as the building placement, the building design, signage, landscaping, and a few other things, will be addressed more specifically in a more detailed way in the, in the site planning stages, when the, when the applicant comes back to the Planning Commission for a specific plan. So there will indeed be more input on the specific details. I'll let Eric talk about traffic. I know that there were some concerns about that. There are some good things that will be happening in terms of traffic, but I'll let him speak to that in a more detailed way. It is correct that, that Planning Commission doesn't require traffic studies anymore, as a matter of course. They have the ability to ask for them. So, what our standard process is, is a development comes in, and if there, if there are traffic concerns, the Planning Commission can ask for, for a traffic study. But typically, what the city does is we plan for, to, to address traffic impacts through our own process. So, right now, actually, the Public Works Department, in conjunction with Planning, is working on citywide studies to address traffic with impact fee funds. In addition to impact fee funds, we can also utilize other funding sources as well to address areas such as this, that which may see, which may be in need of traffic improvements. So those studies are ongoing, and they'll be updated fairly frequently. Again, I'll let Eric address those, but that's kind of an overview. If there are any specific questions, I'm happy to respond.
Sorry, thank you for that. Jeff, regarding the, the plans that were in place with collaboration, what was the intent of any collaboration between the city and existing developments and prospective developers? What, what was envisioned there?
Sure. The, so the retail plan, more of a study, but it was titled a plan because it did give recommendations. The intent of that and a few of our other studies, including the housing market study, was to inform Plan OKC, which it did. So a lot of the recommendations ended up in Plan OKC. But it also had some specific recommendations for a lot of sites, including this general area. And it, it did recommend that the city engage the property owners, not just Simon, but the surrounding property owners. The area that it contemplated was quite large. It took into consideration this site, as well as a few blocks to the east of, of the mall. But the, the intent there was, you know, we knew obviously that this is a, a major retail center for the city, and there were some, some issues that the consultant identified, some things that could be improved, traffic access between the developments, for example, between Belle Isle and the mall and a few other things. We did anticipate that at some point, there might be some transit going through here, and it turns out that there will be. There's a bus rapid transit line planned for Northwest Expressway. And so, for all those reasons, we thought it would be good to, to engage, and further, engage with the property owners, but furthermore, the, the plan did identify this particular site as one of the, kind of the first movers, I guess, as a potential opportunity. So, in terms of kind of conformance with the plan, I feel like this is moving in the right direction. It did anticipate something in this, in this area, as well as some other sites surrounding Penn Square Mall, that could be revitalized, redeveloped, or developed.
So this fits within the plans?
I would say so, absolutely. And there wasn't, there wasn't a timing specified in, in the plan in terms of when this plan should happen. Sometimes, you know, things happen more organically, sometimes it's more, a little more formal.
And then, thank you for that. And then regarding density in this area, did, did planning anticipate or hope for low-level density, medium density, high density? What were, what were we thinking along Northwest Corridor?
So as was mentioned before, it is in the urban medium land use topology area, which anticipates, it can be fairly high density, especially in important areas such as this, and especially in areas that are going to be oriented to transit. And there is a planned stop right at this intersection, actually. And so, for that reason, this would be deemed as, as an area that would be important to add density, because it would be transit-oriented, because it's on a major corridor, and it is located with an urban medium within the city's urban core.
And then, let's see.
And while you're thinking of that, I'll, I'll add, it's, it's all about compatibility. When we talk about increasing density, we recognize that urban medium covers a very large area. There are lots of different development types that exist, single-family. And so, we are sensitive about that, and the Planning Commission is, when they, when they consider these things, make sure that additional density that goes in is as compatible, is compatible with the, with the surrounding neighborhoods.
And so, what, what would you say that during that planning process made this particular project, if at all, compatible with the existing neighborhoods and the temple and the neighborhood across the street?
Well, I think some of the things that were mentioned, there was a lot of kind of back and forth with the neighborhoods, the way that they, the neighborhoods requested that the parking garages be kind of on the outside next to them. I understand there was some recent discussion about the, the buffers on that southwest corner, but making sure that the, that the uses are not, are, are not going to cause too much, you know, noise, lighting, those kinds of issues. And some of that will be taken care of in the site planning stages when it comes back to the Planning Commission. You know, when we address things like lighting and specific building designs, a lot of that can and should be addressed in the design phase.
And then, where'd it go? Walkability? Oh, yeah, sorry. The planning process itself, we, I know this will be old hat for some people, but I, you know, I'm new to the council, and I just want to make sure I'm clear on all this. What happens when a development goes up for proposal? Who's notified? What's the radius of notification? What's the planning process? Just, if you wouldn't mind.
Sure. Who gets notified?
Correct.
Bob, please correct me if I misstate, but my understanding is so that the 300-foot distance is kind of the standard for, for developments. Any kind of rezoning, anybody within that, that radius would be notified well in advance of any kind of, any kind of public hearing. And then, of course, there's the, you know, often, often there are just, there's outreach between the developer and the neighborhoods, and occasionally the Planning Commission, well, more than occasionally, often the Planning Commission, if it becomes clear to them that more outreach would be desirable, they'll continue items until they feel like there's been sufficient outreach and coordination between the developers and the neighbors. And sometimes consensus can't be reached, and it just has to be voted on. Oftentimes, though, compromises are made, and, and the neighbors are able to kind of get confidence level that the, that the development will be compatible.
And just so I'm clear, before I turn this over to Eric, the plan for Northwest Corridor is a bus rapid transit system, and to get that bus rapid transit system, we had to submit to the federal government an environmental study that results in sidewalks along Northwest Expressway for, I believe, the first time ever, meaning walkability and public transportation are part of this corridor going forward. Is that correct? Is that the plan?
That's correct. There is funding identified for, for a lot of infrastructure, both along the corridor and connecting to it. And with the relatively recent news that BRT will be part of this going forward, part of this corridor, I would, I would expect and hope that we would identify additional improvements.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
James, I've got a couple of questions.
Oh, sure.
If you don't mind.
Sure.
I want to make sure I've got this timeline right in my mind. And, and staff evaluated this, and they approved it, subject to certain technical evaluation, correct?
We, the staff report indicated approval, subject to some TEs, yes?
The Planning Commission looked at this and approved it, correct?
That's correct.
And that was a unanimous approval, right?
That's, yes, that's correct.
All right. And then, the concept, comprehensive plan, it contemplates this kind of high-density development, correct?
That's right.
All right. So, did, did Simon Properties, they make a presentation at the Planning Commission meeting? That's what I'm unclear on.
They did not.
Okay. And I didn't hear your answer to James's question. Out of everything you've heard today, is there anything, something that gives you some concern that you should take this back to your staff or take it back to the Planning Commission?
I don't think so. For, for me, as I mentioned, it'll come, the, the project will come back for specific review, and I think that, that will address many of the concerns that have been raised.
What does that mean during the permitting process, that it'll become?
So for a planned unit development, they, they have a general approval, and then they come back later when they get more specific with their plan. So they'll come back with a, for, for example, what you've seen today is conceptual site plans, conceptual buildings. When they are ready to actually get to the point where they're almost ready for a building permit, they'll come back and, and say, "Okay, well, here's the actual building. Here's what it will look like. Here's where it will be precisely on the site. Here's the circulation. Here's where the sidewalks will be. Here's the signage." And all of that will be approved in a specific plan by the Planning Commission.
And when they apply for these permits, will notification be given to others?
Yes. I think it's the same, but for the specific area, specific plans? I'll let Bob speak to that.
Bob Teener, Development Services Director. For specific plans, there's not notification, is my understanding.
Okay.
So, it would just be, it would be submitted to the Planning Commission for their review.
Okay. Thank you.
I had a couple, I'm sorry, a couple of questions. And first, I want to say thank you to my fellow Viking and his wife who came to speak. But as we're looking at this and the 2025 projected traffic conditions, Councilwoman Hammond and I were just kind of talking, and she was mentioning the BRT that was coming. I guess there, the concern is, though, if we're looking at this type of traffic for 2025, that's not going to be a BRT. And that's the unfortunate piece. So, what, I know this is very, we're early in the conversation, but it sounds like we would have to have dedicated bus lanes in order to make this type of development work. But as far as the, the 75-foot garage, I guess that was also a concern for me after listening to some of the residents. Are we going to be able to compromise that, the 75-foot garage, to make sure that our residents are going to be comfortable with that?
Yeah, I addressed this, and I'd like David to speak to it.
Sure. So at the time of Planning Commission, we had the 75-foot garage with a zero setback. In the last two weeks, Councilman Cooper and the neighbors have, have again requested a setback, and so we have agreed to provide that 10-foot setback of, of the garage. But we, we can't compromise on the height, because we need the height to park the development. But what staff had requested in the staff report is But what staff had requested in the staff report is what we're now agreeing to, that being a 10-foot setback.
With how many garages?
The project shows three. There would be one in Track Two that would encompass the multifamily project, there'd be one in Track Four and one in Track Three. But they're incorporated into the development. They're not a garage like you're thinking about it downtown that just stands alone. They are, what you see in the site plan is incorporated into the development.
No, I definitely understand what it looks like and what it is. Again, it's my concern, if you're going to have a 75-foot garage overlooking neighbors, that's just my concern when we're looking at, even with the 10-foot setback, you're still going to have
Sure.
that overlook for the neighborhood.
Right. One of the concerns raised at Planning Commission was the same, but one of the positives is the design of that will be able to be flushed out through the specific plan process. So, the final design is going to have to go back through Planning Commission for approval. As it relates to Track Three, the temple on the south, they are in ownership of specific covenants, so they are working with us and have the ability to steer our development and steer the design of that, as well as the residents in south of Track Four, because of the specific plan process.
Yeah. Well, I'm not really, I know I'm concerned about all of those tracks, but I think when we're looking at even the design and how in Track Four, the temple sits way far from this development, Track Four literally is on the cusp of where we're looking at. So, those are my, I do have a concern about that, especially after hearing the neighbors talk about their concern. And I guess I have another question, and kind of as to Councilman Stonecifer, did Simon receive a notification about this development in the beginning?
Yes. They received notice for both Planning Commission and City Council.
So, I guess then my question would be for Simon, why we waited to respond? And I mean, I'm just asking, just because it's been so long, and just to get clarity on what we're looking at compared to what we know.
Well, I guess the only explanation is, we discovered that we received the notice, and that was after Planning Commission. I would point out that the retail plan of the city says the city should contact Penn Square and bring them into the process. And, you know, I have no excuses to why we misplaced the notice, but we discovered that we got it. For a long time, we didn't think we got one. And if you have ever received one, it just gives you minimal information, a lot of people ignore them. And I think that might be why the retail plan of the city says you should bring in Penn Square Mall and surrounding people into the planning process, because this is such an important part of the revenue for the city besides retail and entertainment.
And were you contacted by the city then, after?
No. No.
I guess the question is, we all want to get, Mr. Sheets, we all want to get this right, and we want what's best for Penn Square Mall, and we want what's best for the families living around Penn Square Mall. And something, there was a disconnect. You guys didn't show up at the Planning Commission meeting, and I don't understand that, and I can't change that. But what I can change is, how long, you say you want to meet, you say you're not afraid of this competition, in fact, you embrace it and welcome it.
Right.
And so, you need a couple of weeks, and you get together with the other side? What are you talking about?
Well, we'd like to get together with the other side, but one thing we'd have to have is we have to have an independent traffic study to really have any meaningful ideas of how to mitigate the problem.
I need you to answer, how long do you need?
Mark? Oh, sorry, Councilman Stonecifer, forgive me. May I ask Eric to speak to this traffic concern? Because I think that will...
Oh, sure, absolutely. Go for it.
Well, I would say, since one piece of this pod is not going to be heard by Planning Commission until October 10th, I would say sometime in, maybe towards the end of September would be sufficient time for us to get together and start developing a plan of getting a, you know, getting a traffic study and trying to make sure that we aren't creating a disaster.
Saying the traffic study would be ready by September?
I can't say that. What I'd like to say is, we...
You don't have to do it right now, but at some point, ask your expert and then let me know, please.
Well, I can ask him right now and see.
Eric?
Well, I would like to, oh, is he coming back with an answer? Sorry.
We would, the traffic people I just talked to said they have it done by the end of September. We do need what was submitted on August 12th. We haven't seen that.
Well, I would like to see, as I, again, my concern is more of the height of 75-foot, so I'd like to see how we can make sure today that that setback, as far as sent back to the Planning Commission for that consideration, to lower that, to make sure we're meeting the neighbors in what they're asking for. So, that's something that we can do today, and that can go with the Planning Commission to make sure that's taken care of.
Councilmember Nice, if I could, have our screen changed momentarily to the exhibit following this, I believe. One more. So, that's the Registry Office Building there in red, and we created this exhibit. We didn't create this for notice for the public process, but more the private outreach to the neighborhood. So, we had our title company go out and identify all of the lot owners within that radius, in addition to the Wildman's Fourth Edition plat map that's over here in this exhibit. And half of all of those, so in addition to what's shaded green here in this exhibit to your left, half of all of the owners contained in that radius to the south of the registry property and southwest have also signed something in support, not just of this PUD, which is generic, but this specific project. So, when we talk about heights in the PUD, we're talking about maximum heights. I do not expect that our parking structure height will be 75 feet, and I know that may not allay the concerns of Mr. and Mrs. Height, but I want to point out, here is the stack of the Wildman's Fourth Edition Third Amendment to the plat, that individual pieces of paper signed, notarized, and recorded against people's property that are reflected in green on this plat map, to amend that plat to allow for the zoning to occur within the property that we own, not just a change of zoning, but an endorsement of this very project. So, those folks are not here this morning, but they spoke in large majority in favor of this project and the placement of parking structures and parking heights where they are.
And that's fine, but as we are looking at Mr. and Mrs. Height here and Mr. Porch, who was also here, because this is affecting them directly, so that is definitely a concern that I have when we're looking at that. So, with that, I understand that it may not be 75 feet, but I still want to make sure that we are accommodating, if this is something for our neighbors that are concerned, that they are being accommodated when it comes to that. And I hope Councilman Cooper, you understand just that concern when it comes to what they're... Yes, sir?
Sometime back, I was served with a suit from the county. Sometime back, I was served with a suit from these developers to get the covenants taken off in District Court. We filed an answer to that, and as of this date, we've never heard another thing out of the suit. I guess it's racking around over at the county somewhere. Do you have any idea where that suit is?
It's a suit that has nothing to do with the application before you. It is pending in the county.
I think it does have an application. It removes those covenants of what can be built over there. Why does that not apply to what we're talking about today?
Covenants are a private contractual matter that have nothing to do with zoning.
Then why were we served with a suit to redo those covenants, so we could get to this point where we're even talking about zoning?
Sure. So, state statutes require that a suit be filed in order to remove covenant restrictions.
Okay. Well, once it's served and filed, where is it? What's happened to it?
We're kind of off on a tangent. Really, this isn't relevant to the application in front of us. You're talking about a private lawsuit between parties. So, Councilman Cooper, you wanted to say something?
Yes. I would very, very much like for Eric Winger to speak to the traffic concerns, if any at all. And then I'd like to hear David speak to Councilperson Nice's concerns about the height. And then I'd like to move forward, because we've been here for two hours on this one topic. So, Eric.
Thank you, Councilman Eric Winger, Director of Public Works. So, to add to what Jeff Butler with planning commented, Public Works works very closely with planning when applications come in for what you see today with the PUD application. And we've seen some of the same preliminary or conceptual renderings. We do not have today the final plans and the final layouts and the dimensions, and that does come later for consideration, review, and approval. But as we look at this today, some of the things, as the developer met with Public Works very early in the process, even prior to the PUD, we were shown some of the ideas and the layouts, and some of the things that were very encouraging for us as the city was the realignment of Northwest 50th. Today, it's an offset intersection, it's quite challenging, and one that, when used today, you cannot make an eastbound to northbound movement. There is a median that is there, and you're forced to make a southbound turn from 50th Street. As a part of the proposal, lining up that intersection with the existing intersection that's signalized that was mentioned is actually an improvement. Now, obviously, traffic study and traffic volume and traffic count need to follow what that improvement may look like, but at least from a geometric standpoint, it corrects an issue there on Pennsylvania Avenue. So, early in the process, we recognized that, we've had some comments also about the realignment of 50th. You can see it on the drawing that's on the screen. 50th will have a weave to it to get that alignment. We are still in the process of reviewing the geometry of the curvature of that street. But again, the developer's been open and subject to some of our comments, and that, again, would come through that final planning process, not necessarily specific to a part of traffic or traffic concerns. Recognizing that Pennsylvania and Northwest Expressway are major corridors, and I know something that's very familiar to the council is the traffic impact fees, presented just about a month ago, those preliminary reports that came out of the 14 benefit areas, and areas like Northwest Expressway and Pennsylvania Avenue have been studied preliminarily. The final studies are due at the end of the year. But what I could report to you today is a reminder that in this benefit area, the number-one intersection that was identified and one that we're seeking to actually begin improvements is actually at Interstate 44 and Western. So, looking at the entire benefit area, there are a lot of needs, and the city will be proceeding with improvements in those areas. This very well may come into a future benefit study recommendation, but it's not on the list today. We also recognize the fact that with the conversations with the BRT, with development changes, that that study's going to change as those different enhancements and features possibly come to this area. So, we will be monitoring that very closely. And I would suggest that as that study's completed, if additional improvements, whether those be lane additions, additional turn lanes, stabilization changes, timing changes, whatever that may come from that engineer that's working on that study, we'll pursue those at that time. But I would just say today, it's a little bit early to start that, not knowing exactly what the final development plan would be, what those approvals might look like, and then looking at those final impact fee studies that are coming back to us here by the end of the year.
And then, just one more time, do we require a developer to produce a traffic study during this process?
So, developers may be asked to do traffic studies, but they're related more specifically to the site-specific requirements. So, as we look at major intersections, arterial street intersections, the city has taken the commitment to actually make its responsibility the improvement to those. So, it would not be likely that we would require the developer to look at Northwest Expressway and Pennsylvania Avenue as a requirement. It's possible the developer may choose to do that on their own, and our impact fees even allow for that, that the developer may do their own developer studies as they look at the development. We will be doing that with the impact fees. Northwest 50th and Pennsylvania Avenue with the realigned study, we anticipate that that will be a part of that final plan discussion, whether we'll acquire a formal study or not. It's really too early for us to make that decision, just having not seen that site plan that Jeff mentioned. We just haven't seen what's final. We continue to see things that you see on the screen today, which are conceptual and very preliminary.
And then, do you have, and/or did staff, do they have concerns about increased traffic flow on the residential streets, or is 50th Street's realignment to address that and the different entrances there off of Northwest Expressway?
So, Public Works staff did not have any comment specific to the PUD. The one comment that we had specific to the vacation of the existing 50th Street was to ensure that the new 50th Street would be platted and opened. So, we need to make sure that if 50th Street is closed, that it's reopened to maintain that connection. So, that was the only comment that Public Works had.
And then the line of sight concern that we had right here on the intersection of Northwest Expressway in Pennsylvania, is there any moment that that could be built up to create those sort of safety concerns, or are we in a place where we're not concerned, and this would actually be a walkable green space, as I'm seeing here in this proposal?
So, some of the early drawings that we reviewed, there are actually other concerns with some of the utilities, some of the right-of-way that's currently maintained on that specific corner. I don't have comments today to share on the site distance, but there are some other property matters that need to be resolved. And then, as mentioned, it's potential, a stop location for the BRT. So, I don't know that we'd want to comment this early on the specific layout of that building that's shown, but it would be something that would come into the conversation as we proceeded forward on a more final plan.
And to be very, very clear, do you at Public Works, traffic, and staff have any hesitation about proceeding with this proposal at this point, based on traffic or any other concerns?
We're in agreement with the PUD as it is today.
Thank you very much. David, would you mind, just to end on this, the concern about the height of the parking garage? You know, one thing, when I spoke with Mr. and Ms. Height, you know, they shared their concerns about that property and the lack of the setback. I reached out to you, you spoke with your client, the applicant, and we were able to procure a 10-foot setback, and I appreciate that. What can we do to address the height concerns?
Sure. So, I talked to Ryan, and what we can, we can limit the height of the parking structure in Track Four to 60 feet. Again, we don't know the final height, we'll know that when we go through specific plan. And we fully respect their concerns. I do think it's important, you know, we mentioned residences, they don't live there. These are investment properties. This is, I don't know if their tenants have concerns. It's our understanding that there is widespread excitement and support from the people who live there. We haven't heard anything negative from their tenants, and so, these are investment properties, but again, we respect their concerns. So, we can do the 10-foot setback, and then we can limit the height to the 60 feet for the parking structure in that southwest corner of Track Four.
I would very, very much, yes, ma'am.
I'm sorry, but I was going to say, investment property or not, there's still people that will live there. Do we have, do we know for sure, Mr. and Mrs. Height or Mr. Porch, of your renters that stay there, what their thoughts are? Is this...
They are broke.
And then, I know, I'm sorry, we have a gentleman in the back, and then I promise I'll be done asking questions.
I don't want to be out of line, but our daughter lives there, and a friend of my wife. So, and it's been family. And I would just like, one thing I didn't think to ask you guys, to ask the people from the city, is why they retracted from their original recommendation of 35-feet height, two stories, and 150 feet? What precipitated that change to affect the living quality and the rights of the neighborhood?
When, to that question, those are recommendations, is that correct? And those are not necessarily things that the developer has to do? Is that what I'm understanding, my experience up here?
I'm sorry, was that the staff?
Uh, I'm, I'm sorry, was that, uh, was that the staff report you're referring to?
Oh, okay. Yes, thank you. Yeah, there is a, uh, it wasn't a TE, there were some suggestions, suggestions in the staff report, um, about, you know, ways to mitigate. And what we typically do is talk about different ways to mitigate some of the concerns such as, such as the height, um, or setbacks or things of that nature. So this wasn't a TE, it was some text, uh, in, in the staff report itself that refers to, you know, landscape buffers or, um, or height limitations. Says the PUD proposes building step, set, step backs next to residential, which would limit buildings to 35 feet and two stories. Uh, this was back in, uh, a March 28th, uh, version that, uh, was continued.
Which is, that's the only version we have. And 150 feet back, not 10.
Yeah, and this was, this was contemplating kind of, uh, on a, looks like a PUD, uh, the whole, the, the entire PUD, just ways to, to, to kind of negotiate the, um, that issue. Um, and, you know, I'm, I'm, I don't have the, the site plan that was with this at the time, so I'm not sure what, uh, what exactly kind of the, what I know is what, uh, what the Planning Commission saw on June 13th, which is this, this site plan before us right now, and what the TEs were at that point.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So.
You really don't know why. Is that right?
Don't know.
You don't know why you changed your mind?
Uh, I'm not familiar with, uh, I wasn't involved at that point back in March, no. But what I, what I can, what I am familiar with is, is what was eventually decided on by the Planning Commission.
Like Bob, maybe Bob Teener perhaps has something to add to that.
Thank you very much. Thank you.
The, the section of the ordinance, or the staff report he's referring to is our recommendations that could bring a PUD into closer compliance. But the staff, when they, when they want something changed, we put it in the technical evaluations.
And it wasn't in the technical.
And it wasn't in the technical.
But it was a staff recommendation.
It was, it was a suggestion to the Planning Commission. They reviewed it, considered it, and they were comfortable with the PUD as submitted.
And then based on Mr. and Mrs. Height bringing that recommendation to me over coffee, we were able to get that recommendation actually moved into action for you all.
All right, the 10 feet.
The 10 feet. And then it sounds like we got 60 feet for the height of that particular parking garage. Is that correct? So that's a commitment.
Yes, you could, through a motion, you could move to amend, um, the PUD to those two items. And then a second vote on the PUD itself.
I would need to move to amend for the height.
And the setback.
And the setback.
Yes, sir.
Okay, well, then that's what we're going to do. Uh, Councilwoman Nice, did you want to add anything?
No, that was my concern. And if, if the neighbors are comfortable with that, I, I, I move forward and I will second that.
Thank you. And then I just want to briefly, ah, I wasn't going to say anything, but I'm going to, um, so I, I'm going to, I ran a campaign where I said I believed in open and transparent government, so I'm going to say in public what I've said in private to both Simon and to the applicant. I'm excited about this possibility. I, as a public transportation trustee for the last four years, believe passionately and strongly in public transportation and transit-oriented development. And as I've said to Simon, and I will continue to say, you're an institution, you're an anchor. And we should be so lucky that along a BRT route will exist Penn Square Mall. My hope is that as, you know, my generation's experiencing this, like even, even worse, this transition that's occurring in retail right now, my hope is that as we create a more reliable public transportation system through this existing BRT that will come online spring 2023, and as Maps4 has proposed two additional BRTs, that this will get people no longer homebound, but connected to our different retail corridors. And I would hope that a synergy would exist between these two projects. And the walkability of your project is why I will be voting to move forward on this item, very specifically the walkability of your project and the placemaking of your project and the fact that it is connecting to those neighborhoods. If that weren't there, we would be having a wholly different conversation. But as it stands, based on everything I know about BRT and everything I know about, uh, public transportation, this fits. And based on what I'm hearing from the experts at Public Works, based on what I'm hearing from, um, planning, I am encouraged and excited by the possibility of this corridor. Um, I really want to reiterate that I consider Simon, um, a partner and, uh, an institution. And my hope is that we are able to bring more people through public transportation to all of the commercial businesses that call that area home. And with that, I would like to move approval of this item.
You mean you want to move?
Oh, my goodness, with. I think this is my first time to get to do some amendments.
You want to move the amendments?
I'd like to move the amendment for the 10-foot setback and for the height of the 60-foot for the parking garage in track four.
With the max of 60 feet?
Max of 60.
I'll second that.
Okay. All right, so the motion is for the amendments. Any further discussion? Seeing none, cast your votes. Passes unanimously.
And then I move approval for item B with, is that?
This is, so this would be, yes, item nine B1.
And then nine B2 right after that?
As amended, yeah.
Okay. Uh, nine B1 as amended, I'd like to move approval.
Okay. Second. All right, got a se, motion in a second. Any further discussion? I'll just say to our friends from Simon, you know, you've been great partners, uh, and we, and may you always be so. What you witnessed today, we, we do planning cases every two weeks, but what you witnessed today, we don't do it every five years probably. And, and it's because you didn't participate in the Planning Commission portion, but out of respect for, for what you mean to our community and, and what great partners you've been, you, you haven't heard too much griping about the time that this has taken today. But it is a little out of our expertise to get this far into the weeds in the planning cases. This is why we have a Planning Commission. But, uh, we want to definitely to hear you out and, uh, we hope that we can make this the best for you in the years ahead. And, and again, we greatly value what you do at, at Penn Square Mall. We well aware of what that means to our community. Uh, any further discussion on the items? Seeing none, cast your votes. Passes unanimously. Okay, thank you.
Do we need to do?
Uh, nine B2.
Yeah.
Uh, move approval. Okay. Got a motion in a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, cast your votes. Passes unanimously. Okay, moving on to nine.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, please.
Simon would like to request that they receive notice of the site plan at the Planning Commission.
Okay, I don't know, is that a thing we do? I'm sure we're happy to accommodate whatever we can. Bob?
I didn't hear what he asked, I'm sorry.
We just, we would like to have notice of when the hearing on the final site plan is going to be at the Planning Commission.
We.
Just a matter of calling them.
Yeah, we, we can make a note and, and contact to them.
Okay, great, of course, we'd be happy to do that. Thank you. Okay, item nine C. This is ordinance on final hearing. It was recommended for approval, closing portions of the utility easements in Park Place Heights Phase One. Uh, Councilman McAtee.
Which one do we own, sir?
Uh, nine C1, bottom of page 21.
Have we done nine D, five and six and seven?
We're on C.
C, C1, page 21. You're, this is in Ward three.
Oh, I'm sorry, I was on a different. No, anybody sign up for this?
No.
I move for approval.
Got a motion in a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, cast your votes. Passes unanimously. Nine C2, closing portions of Northwest 82nd Street, et cetera. Councilman Cooper.
Yeah, do we have anyone signed up to speak on this?
No, sir.
All right, um, with that then, I'd like to move approval.
Motion in a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, cast your votes. Passes unanimously. Nine C3, closing half of the right-of-way of North Santa Fe Avenue, north of Wolf, et cetera. Councilwoman Nice.
And do we have anyone missed signed up to speak?
No, me.
All right, with that, I'll move for approval.
Got a motion in a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, cast your votes. Passes unanimously. And for the record, we have no one who's signed up to speak on any further zoning cases. Correct?
Correct.
All right. Nine C4, closing the west 135 feet of the 10-foot utility easement in Block Two of Manor Hill Subdivision. Councilman Cooper.
Anyone here that's, oh, no, there's no one here, I just heard that. I just heard that. Sorry, I'm still on a date, uh, and I'd like to move approval.
All right, motion? Do I hear a second?
Sir.
All right, motion in a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, cast your votes. Passes unanimously. Now we're at nine D. These are also ordinances on final hearing. Nine D1, establishing a no parking anytime restriction on both sides of Hemingway Drive, et cetera. Councilman Cooper.
Um, who's?
Motion in a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, cast your votes. Passes unanimously. Nine D2, removing 45-degree angle parking on the east side of North Broadway from Fifth to Tenth. Councilwoman Hammond.
I move for approval.
Motion in a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, cast your votes. Passes unanimously. Nine D3, we do in fact have someone who's signed up on this. Uh, Joy, if you want to come make your way forward. Nine D3 is removing three reserved parking spaces for the physically disabled on the east side of North Broadway Avenue, et cetera. Councilwoman Hammond and Joy Reardon has signed up to speak.
Yeah, my, so I'll let Joy make her way to the front. Um, my understanding, uh, is that these were parking spaces that are being removed because of, uh, the streetcar tracks. So we're just, um, doing some realignment to officially do what we have already done.
Okay.
Um, so Joy, if, if you'd like to make your comments.
Hey, guys, this is Joy. Uh, 125 Northwest 9th. Uh, I have several issues here, uh, three and six. Um, why are we taking them away and not adding two?
We, so we are adding two. So in the next item, um, we are, and again, we've already done this, unfortunately, this, we're just aligning our, uh, the city with what has already happened. But we do, we are adding, are we adding one or two? Am I looking at that incorrectly?
On item, is, you're looking at item four?
Yeah.
It doesn't say. You know how many we're adding on item four? Eric?
Yes, so it says, yes, it says we're adding two. So we are, we're taking away the angled and essentially adding parallel is my understanding. Is that correct?
So these are part of the Map Street Streetcar Project, so it is the removal of those that were affected by the track relocation, but then adding them back in, just as Councilwoman just mentioned, right in item number four to put them back in in a different position.
Yes.
Okay.
So does that alleviate your concerns?
Well, uh, the one big concern I've got there at Sixth and, uh, Broadway, is there supposed to be some kind of development there?
Yes, the Heartland payment?
No, it's across the street. That little, little plot of land by the, uh, I'm going to be nice, the dispensary.
The dispensary.
Uh, that is, I'll speak on that later.
Okay, yeah, if you want.
But yeah, uh, the, we actually need more handicap spots on Broadway, not less.
Yeah. Well, at least, we can say for now today at least that we are, we are at a, uh, we're hitting even at least. Um, and we can talk later about the possibility of adding some more, for sure. Thank you, Joy.
That would work for me.
Um, and with that, I will move for approval.
This is item nine D3.
Yes.
Got a motion in a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, cast your votes.
Sir.
Passes unanimously. Okay, nine D4, establishing reserved parking spaces for the physically disabled on the east side of North Broadway, et cetera. Councilwoman Hammond.
Yes, so this, we are essentially replace those two angled spots with parallel spots, so I will move for approval.
All right, we've got a motion in a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, cast your votes. Passes unanimously. Okay, I will have to step out for items under nine D, and Vice Mayor McAtee will be presiding.
Yeah, thank you. I was all excited. I thought my moment had come a few minutes ago, but I was several lines ahead. Thank you, David. David has to recuse himself. Okay, uh, first up is, uh, nine D5, removing 45-degree angle. Uh, Joe Beth, if you'd like to handle that.
Yes, yeah, so, um, I will move for approval. This is just removing some angled parking in that area over by the West Village Development. No, that's next.
Joy, why, that's signed up, do you, you want to speak on nine D?
Yeah, it's the same thing.
On six. She's wanting to speak on six.
On six. Six and seven.
Okay, so we're ready for five.
We have a motion in a second.
Any comments? Yes. Oh, okay. Okay, next up is nine D6. We have a citizen signed up. Joy, would you like to speak to this?
Uh, from what I'm reading here and everything, it's very confusing on what it, what exactly it entails, both six and seven. It's moving, uh, the handicap spots?
Mm-hmm, yes. Yeah, so it is moving them from, um, right now, it's, looks like it's a, or has been approximately 153 feet west of West Sheridan. Sorry. No, of, is that of Klassen or Fred Jones? Can you speak to this? You might have a little more expertise in the specifics.
So the item that was just approved is, there is a redesign of the north curb line of Sheridan between Fred Jones and Klassen as a part of the residences' development. So these three items and the one that you just approved, you just removed the parking so that it could be reestablished. Item six specifically is removing two existing reserved spaces. Item seven is placing them back, but in a slightly different configuration for the new curb line and that new development. So they're not being removed completely, they're being partially removed from one location and moved to another on that same block, on the north side of Sheridan between Klassen and Fred Jones.
Okay, my only concern is where is the ramps?
Can you speak to that as they?
So, so with.
Also on three, the ramp issue.
So when the ADA spaces, when the reserved spaces are, are then moved, um, the new ramps and that part of that design is part of those technical plans that do come to Public Works, and so our staff review and approve those, and then we also have field inspectors to make sure that they're built according to the ADA requirements. This is just an administrative action to actually place that parking. It's not the technical part which is happening simultaneously.
Okay, thank you. Does that address your concerns?
Yeah, there's, there's several other places in the city that, uh, we need to realign the parking with, with the ADA ramps. And I'm waiting to the end to bring up several of them.
Okay, thank you. Well, thanks for being honest.
But yeah, my biggest concern is when you move the handicap ramps or handicap spots, no matter where it is in the city, you've got to think about people like me, like this gentleman right here. Uh, some of us do drive, but without the, the stripe marking and the ramps, we can't get over the curbs. And the curbs are 36 inches high sometimes.
So, so just as a follow-up, my assurance is that when the parking spaces are moved, the ramps have to come into compliance too. So the ramp goes with the space, and so it's not just a simply a matter of moving the paint and moving the sign, the curbs then have to be redesigned, the ramps provided, it's all part and all the same.
Okay. Okay.
Now, that's legally required.
Okay.
We'd have to bring it in a conformant.
Gotcha, thank you. So with that, I will move for approval on D six.
We have a motion in a second. Please cast your votes. And it is done.
Approved unanimously.
Item seven.
And this is again, our motion for approval since this is replacing the spaces we just removed.
We have a motion in a second. Any comments? Don't see any. Please cast your votes.
Approved unanimously.
Thank you. E, public hearing regarding ordinances relating to businesses and general schedule of fees.
All right, we're on nine E. This is the public hearing regarding the ordinance related to businesses and general schedule of fees. This was briefed on at the last meeting. This is really regarding medical marijuana and bringing our ordinances in alignment with state law. So we've already heard the presentation, but in our cycle, we always have three meetings. And this is the public hearing portion. Is there anyone who wishes to speak under the public hearing portion of this agenda regarding these ordinance changes? Seeing none, we'll move on.
Mayor, if I could just ask a quick question?
No, you can't.
I'm just curious, really, I'm just curious how we came up with the dollar amounts on those?
The Budget Department did a review of all the different inspections and paperwork that's involved in processing that, which, that includes our Development Services inspectors as well as fire inspectors. And they basically do a estimate based on the amount of time it takes to review each application and they come up with the amount from that.
So by saying that, we expect that to be revenue neutral? Is that correct?
It's, yeah, it's supposed to reflect our cost, yes.
Okay, thank you. That was it.
Okay. Moving on to item nine F one. This is the public hearing regarding the dilapidated structures here listed. Is there anyone who wishes to speak in this public hearing? That's okay. That's okay. Can you come forward to the microphone? And if you wouldn't mind stating your name, address, and which item it is that you're speaking about on item nine F one?
My name is Gerald Tims. I'm at 1229 West Main. I also have the, the building at 1239 West Main. They've got it down as, it does need a roof on it. I have had a few problems securing financing to do that, which I have now done. So my plan is to put a new roof on it and repair that building.
Okay.
Chad Davidson, Code Enforcement. We're not a problem with working with you, getting you a little bit of extra time to get that done.
Okay.
Just get finished with the talking hall.
Okay.
Or take you back.
Okay.
Talk to you about some timelines.
Okay, thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you, thank you guys.
I guess the question is, are we going to leave it on the list? Are we going to defer it?
So if we leave it on the list, it gives plenty of time to work through that with him, or should we defer that?
Sure.
So leave it on the list?
I think so. I think that's, that's what we've done in the past. Our department's really good about working with citizens, bringing properties into compliance and want to continue to do that.
Does he have your card and phone number?
We'll get him that information.
Okay, thank you.
Soon as we're finished here.
All right. Anyone else wish to speak on the items on nine F one? Seeing none. I entertain a motion to adopt the resolution found in nine F two declaring that the structures are dilapidated. All right, we've got a motion in a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none. Cast your votes. Passes unanimously. Nine G one, this is a public hearing regarding the dilapidated structure here listed in HP Landmark District, or actually three of them. Is there anyone here who wishes to speak under nine G one's public hearing?
I have a concern.
Uh huh.
Mayor. Nine G one A. I would like to defer this until December. And the reason why is the HP Board and also the O M E S was contacted by the homeowner and they needed 120 days to fix that and O M E S granted them that time. So I also want to make sure we grant them that time as well.
Anything to say to that?
We agree with that.
December 3rd.
December 3rd is a meeting?
No, it would be after the 5th because the 5th is when they have their HP Board meeting.
So do we have a meeting on the 17th, December 17th?
I would move that we defer until December 17th.
Okay. Any, we've got a motion in a second on the deferral of that item, which is nine G one. Any further, one A, is there any further discussion?
Is... Oh, no, go ahead.
It's, it's just on the shed, right? Is that correct?
It is.
It is? Okay.
Okay. Any further discussion? Seeing none. Cast your votes. Passes unanimously. The item is deferred to December 17th. Returning back to nine G one B and C, is there anyone here who wishes to speak for those items?
Me. I invite Your Honor Chad and Katie to speak with HP, I believe. I believe they're here. Are they here?
Yeah.
If not, if you could... Yeah, I'm concerned about this because this is in a HP neighborhood and I just wanted to kind of get some backstory on where we are and I'm...
Well, I've got, I've got a few notes here.
This is B you're talking about?
Yeah, B and then C in a moment, both of them actually.
B, as you guys can see, it's, it's got a pretty good sized hole there. Looks like it's got a little bit of rafter damage. And I know that we haven't really made contact with the property owner, but we were able to make contact with a relative of the property owner. They've assured us that the property owner is going to contact us. They want to repair the structure. We want to work with them, much like we're going to with this gentleman back here, to bring the property into compliance.
What's a, what's a timeline? Because according to the HP notes I have to remove this detached garage, even in the shape that it's in, would have an adverse effect on, on that neighborhood. Which I know.
Pretty dangerous situation there.
But I'm curious what the timeline would look like in your communications with...
Well, once, you know, timelines will be established once we speak with the citizen. The owner of the property. But we're willing to give people, you know, certainly adequate time as long as they're making great progress on the property. We've, we've seen these things take a couple of months for someone to repair these and maybe, you know, longer than that, just depending on...
What would be an appropriate amount of time to defer this? Because I, this, this particular street, Robinson, you know, having looked at the history of the city, I mean, this has been through a lot. This basically once upon a time was made into a highway through a neighborhood. And so, you know, the people of Jefferson Park and Paseo have been through a lot to try and, you know, bring back to life and preserve. So what would be a reasonable amount of time?
Again...
Yeah, until you talk to them.
It's really tough until we talk to the, to the citizen what their, their issues are.
What if we just deferred it to the next meeting and give them an opportunity? Because you said they're supposed to reach out to you already?
We've talked with the relative of the owner of the property and they have given them our information and we encourage them to contact our office to speak about...
Yeah, I'd move to...
Just, just to get the clarification on that in the communication?
But we have not talked to the owner of the property. The, the relative claims that they want to repair, they want to repair the structure. We want the structure repaired also.
I think, I think keeping on for two, I mean, deferring it for two weeks, keeping it on the agenda, keeps the pressure on that you don't want to just, you know, we take it off and strike it and then it just sits in that condition still. So that would at least prompt the communication.
Okay. No, I think that sounds fine. So I'd like to defer this for two weeks.
Okay.
Just B or B and C?
B and then I, then I, I'd like, I, can I ask about C yet or I didn't...
Yes, of course.
Where are we at with C? Because this week another...
See, a little different issue on this property. We have had multiple complaints on this particular property, not only for the home, but for the detached garage that we have there. We've issued four property maintenance citations on that structure. That's the home, the rear structure, which is the detached garage apartment. Property owner has not responded to any notices that we've sent for property maintenance or to this latest notice we've sent for dilapidation. They, they live in the area. They just haven't responded. We're certain they're getting the, the notices. They live close enough to the property. You would think they were able to see the activities that happen at the property. Haven't been responsive to anything we've ever done. As far as junk and debris, unsecured, dilapidated property maintenance cases, just, they do not respond on this particular property.
Because according to HP, the dwelling is something they recommend keeping, again, because of the adverse effect of tearing this down.
Right.
But not the garage. So I'm curious what, what we might suggest there.
I'm, I'm, the dwelling, I do not think we have as a notice, the primary structure, the dwelling. The garage appears to be, the portion that we're concerned most with is that portion that was built on top of the garage, which is the apartment. I believe that, that may have, and Katie may be able to tell us if she was here, that may have been something that was added at a later date because the garage is kind of...
But you're saying the entire structure from the HP report?
Yeah, the entire, the dwelling itself.
But the garage and the garage apartment?
Well, I, I guess my notes are confusing now that I'm looking at this because it says, my notes say keep dwelling, not garage, but this is a garage apartment, but maybe he would...
But the garage apartment is the only thing that's listed on the agenda, right?
That's correct.
I'd like to, I'd like to defer this also for two weeks and I'd like to invite, if you could have, I thought HP would be here, Katie or Chad, to speak to this. I'd like to hear from them.
Okay.
At that next meeting in two weeks to find out what's going on in terms of why this would be such an adverse effect to Shepherd if this building were not there.
Okay.
Thank you. So do I need to move a proof?
Can he defer both in the same vote? Okay.
And then if you can just make sure that we send an invite to Katie and Chad to be here from HP?
We'll make sure they're here.
Thank you so much.
Okay, so we've got a motion for deferral of B and C to the next meeting in two weeks. And is there a second? All right, we've got a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none. Cast your votes. Passes unanimously. We have nothing left under item nine G one, so we'll move on to nine H one. Okay, we've got a public hearing regarding the unsecured buildings here listed. Items A through X, except for the ones that the city manager struck at the beginning of the meeting. We do have someone who has signed up to speak and so we'll turn there first, Carl Evans. Okay, all right, so he's not here. Is there anyone else who wishes to speak under this public hearing? Seeing none, I would entertain a motion to adopt the resolution found at nine H two declaring that the structures are unsecured.
Move the resolution.
Got a motion in a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none. Cast your votes. Passes unanimously. Okay, we are now at nine I one. This is the public hearing regarding the abandoned buildings here listed, except for the one struck at the beginning of the meeting by the city manager. Items A through O. Is there anyone here who wishes to speak under this public hearing? Seeing none, I would entertain a motion to adopt the resolution found at nine I two declaring that the buildings are abandoned. We've got a motion. And a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none. Cast your votes. Passes unanimously. Nine J is a joint resolution with the Oklahoma City Economic Development Trust. This is to be introduced today and set for public hearing and final consideration on August 27th. This is approving the allocation of proceeds in an amount of half a million dollars for certain job creation economic development centers with TTEC Services Corporation. I believe we have a presentation.
Yes, so Kathy O'Connell will introduce the presentation here with Kathy's with the Alliance for Economic Development.
Hello, good, good morning still, I guess, maybe afternoon. I just want to quickly introduce this project to you today. This is TTEC, which is a business services outsourcing company. They plan to locate at 7725 Connect, which is formerly known as OKC Works. The first year average wage for these jobs is about $36,000. They plan to make about a $4 million capital investment. With that, I'd like to introduce Ms. Mualay, who is TTEC's Director of Site Selection and Government Relations.
Good afternoon, everyone, and thanks for having me here today. So just here to talk a little bit about TTEC and our vision here for Oklahoma City. TTEC was founded in 1982 by our current CEO, Ken Tuckman. And today we're operating on six different continents, continue to see growth here in the U.S. And have over 50,000 employees. Basically, our, you know, our founding principle is about providing the right customer experience for our clients and their clients, as well as, you know, making sure that that creates a lasting value for our clients as well. We're headquartered in Denver, Colorado, specifically Englewood. And again, we have over 50,000 employees globally. And we continue to see growth in the U.S. Actually, in the last five years, we've seen a lot of growth. And as part of our coming here to Oklahoma City, we've got a client that we've been working with for over 10 years. And they approached us over a year ago. They were looking to move into some claims work with a partner. And so we started our search for, you know, what would be the right market to put this work into. And so the kind of work that, you know, employees would be doing would be basically insurance, licensed, claims work. And these individuals are licensed in 50 states. And so with our search, we looked at some of our existing markets that we have today to see what would be the right fit for that. And then we also looked at new markets and that's where Oklahoma City comes into play. And started talking with the team here, again, about a year ago and took a look at a lot of data as we did that search in terms again of what would be a right fit, you know, tier one market. Do you have the right labor skillset that we can, you know, utilize to be able to, to actually fill this specific, specific work for this company? And, you know, we came out here back in April and the team again did such an incredible job of really showcasing Oklahoma City and what it could represent for us. Again, you know, the market ticked off all of the, the right boxes when we looked at it on paper in terms again of labor market, skillset, wages, as well as, you know, access to, to veterans as well, which is important to not just us as TTEC, but for our client as well. And so the partnership that we witnessed when we visited this market really got us excited about what could Oklahoma City offer for us as a market to, to go and expand into. And when we look at new markets to expand into, we're not looking for a market that you can go in for, you know, two, three, five years. We're looking for longevity, which is a big part of our search when we look at new markets. And so, you can move on on this one. And so, you know, when we looked at that for this specific market, we walked away confident that this is a market that even with all the research that we had done before, as well as, you know, the, the people that we got to meet when we were here from the veteran's side, from staffing agencies, we got a really good sense that this would be a market where we could come in and really be able to work in from a long-term perspective. And so the partnership piece of it, again, we've continued to partner with the teams here. And that's been such a huge part of our decision to, to come and locate here because we know we can't do it alone, right? We're good at what we do, but we don't know the market as well as, as, as your team does. And so that partnership has been key to really help us, you know, feel confident about coming here. As mentioned, you know, we'll be coming here with this specific project, looking at 280 jobs in the next three years. And at the end of that, looking at an average wage of 38,000. One thing I do want to highlight, which you'll see on the next bullet as well as on the next slide, is that our company, there's a lot of growth opportunities. So people will start off, you know, as agents, but there's a lot of promotions that happen within the company itself. 80% of the people that we have within our organization get promoted. In fact, I tell the story of my, my boss started off 20 years ago as an agent and today he's, you know, Vice President of, you know, Site Selection. So a lot of stories like that that you will see. And those growth opportunities are there for individuals that come in to work for us. I want to highlight real quickly, just the next couple of slides, which our commitment as well, not just to, you know, bringing jobs, but to the community as well. We're very focused on education and so employees, we've got a community foundation that basically focuses on education and it's employee driven. focuses on education, and it's employee-driven. So basically, any employee can raise their hand and say, hey, I would like us to, you know, support this school or, you know, whatever it is to do with education, and that goes through a grant application process. Last year alone, we donated $372,000 towards this effort. We also have a pretty high focus, I mentioned briefly, on veterans, but, you know, as a company, we're very committed to veterans and ensuring that we partner in communities that has, have that tie to veterans, because we are committed to hiring, you know, on a yearly basis, at least a minimum of 1,000 veterans across the U.S. And then last but not least, in the next couple of slides, as mentioned, we are the facility that we chose, 7725 Connect. We're very excited about opening there. On the next couple of slides, we'll share you a little bit about, you know, what you would expect to see when you walk into this facility, what we call our Engage 2020 Vision, which is basically a very open, and you can run through the next slides, it's a very open space. We know that people are going to be coming, spending most of their day with us, so we want to make sure that they're in an environment that they're comfortable in, is, you know, happy, and, you know, that's, that's part of, not just, you know, the aesthetics is obviously a big part of it, but, you know, the leadership that we'll hire for that space, you know, we'll encourage that culture to ensure that everybody feels warm, welcome, and happy in their environment and ready to grow. Any questions?
Any questions, comments? Thank you. Okay, well, then we need to, this is to be introduced, the resolution today, so we haven't voted on it yet. So any motion to that effect?
Make a motion to introduce the resolution.
Okay. Got a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, cast your votes. Passes unanimously. It will be set for public hearing and final consideration on August 27th. Moving on to 9K1, this is a resolution approving the request for salary continuation for Corporal Nicholas Gilmore. Don't believe we need executive session, I would take a motion. Motion and a second for the resolution. Any further discussion? Seeing none, cast your votes. Passes unanimously. 9L1, resolution approving the request for salary continuation for Corporal Evelyn Taylor. Don't believe we need executive session. Got a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, cast your votes. Passes unanimously. 9M1, resolution authorizing the municipal councillor to confess judgment without admitting liability in the case of Ames v. City of OKC. Don't believe we need executive session. Got a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, cast your votes. Passes unanimously. 9N1, resolution of the City Council of the City of Oklahoma City, authorizing and directing the municipal councillor to enter into an agreed settlement and general entry of judgment in the case City of OKC v. Metropolitan Parking. I believe we don't need executive session. We've got a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, cast your votes. Passes unanimously. 9O1, resolution authorizing Richard Smith to represent and defend former city employees Jerry Flowers and David Shoup in the case styled Miller Jr. v. City of OKC. Don't believe we need executive session. Motion and a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, cast your votes. Passes unanimously. 9P1, claims recommended for denial, items A through G. Don't believe we need executive session. Is there anyone here who wishes to speak? Seeing none, we've got a motion and a second to deny the claims. Any further discussion? Seeing none, cast your votes. Passes unanimously. 10A1, claims recommended for approval. We have items A through P. Don't believe we need an executive session. Don't believe there's anyone here wishing to speak. Got a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, cast your votes. Passes unanimously. Brings us to item 11, items from council. We'll start down here with Councilman Cooper in Ward 2. Okay?
I always have something to say.
Okay.
So I just wanted to say, it was, we, I enjoyed myself last week. Mayor and I went to go welcome in the new recruit class, the biggest recruit class we've had for, oh, city manager as well, and our two newer city assistants, city managers, but recruit class 138. It was a joy to see those faces, and I know, and we are expecting them to protect and serve as they were sworn to do in an effective manner for our communities. Also, FD Moon Middle School was just spectacular yesterday morning. Went to greet the young people for school, and it was a lot of community partners there, so I know this week is going to be great for them, as well as the new school year. And my godson started third grade at Cleveland Elementary, so I know he's excited about that. But we do want to also mention, there's a couple of things happening this week for the community within Ward 7. Our Parks and Recreation Department, we're having our final public information and construction update for the Douglas Recreation Center in Douglas Park, and that's going to happen this Thursday, 6:00 p.m. at the James E. Stewart Golf Clubhouse. So that's happening at 6:00 p.m. And also, we want to make mention of the Northeast Community Mural Project. That's going to be a community meeting from 6:00 to 7:30 at the auditorium at the Douglas, 600 North High Avenue, so that's going to be happening as well. And job well done, Councilman Cooper, for your whole assignment and your new property for the Oaks. And I'll say, you know, myself, Simon's near and dear to me. That was my first job, was a hot dog on a stick. So, but I understand, and, you know, those are connections you have, but I know hopefully they'll be able to have a connection, and it'll be better for both in the end. So job well done on that.
Just briefly, I wanted to bring everybody up to date on the penalty reduction program. We started the advertising campaign through the Gazette and through the Curbside Chronicle through a month, a little over a month now. We've had 201 cases come in, and we've collected $31,488. The one thing that I think is important for people out there in the public who have an outstanding warrant, the advertising campaign emphasizes, you won't be arrested or go to jail. Come in and see us, and let's work something out on these old warrants that have been around for years and years. Thank you.
Thank you. That concludes items from council. We're at item 12 on the agenda, city manager reports.
We have three city manager reports. We don't have any presentations on these. We have the revenue enforcement report, the quarterly investment report, and the hotel tax report, so we'd be happy to answer any questions if you have those.
Okay, all of that is available online. If you go to OKC.gov and find the council agenda, you can click and read the reports that the city manager just referenced. Okay, we'll move on to item 13, citizens to be heard. We have a few who signed up to speak today, but we have the unique occasion of someone who signed up to speak in advance and therefore appears actually on the agenda, so we'll start there. Nick and Louise Brooke are welcome to come to the podium. Your name and address are already on the agenda, but if you'd limit your remarks to, I guess, three minutes per person, since there's two of you, we'll give you, I don't know if this is a team effort, but in totality, we'll consider it six minutes.
All right, I'm Louise Brooke. This is my husband, Nick Brooke.
How do you do?
We live at 2257 Northwest 36th Street, and Cooper is our councillor. We're very excited about that. Thank you for meeting with us. We're very concerned about the gun laws in Oklahoma and how they're going to change, and we want to know what our city is going to do to protect our citizens, so that's why we're here. We're data analysts, so our job is to look at characterizations of data and predict what's going to happen in the future and to suggest when interventions need to happen. And so to that, my husband's going to talk about a graph that he made.
Oh, right. So my name is Nick Brooke. I'm a professional mathematician. So we're going to show you some data about mass shootings in the United States. So this is anytime anyone more than three people die in the same shooting incident at once. This is actually a relatively new phenomenon in America. You might not really realize it, though, because it's been gradually getting worse. So in the period from '86 to 1994, there were an average of 13 deaths a year in the United States in these kinds of mass shootings. In 1991, 24 people were killed in a Luby's cafeteria, and Congress decided that that was way too many people to die at one time from a gun, and so they passed an assault weapons ban. During that ban, that was a 10-year period from September 1994 to the following 10 years, that annualized rate went down to 10 people per year. So it went from 13 down to 10. But in 2004, things were different. The ban sunset, and assault weapons once again became available for purchase across the United States. During the following 10-year, people, 30 people died every year during the following 10-year period. That was a period that included Virginia Tech, Sandy Hook, and the Aurora Theater. But wait, that's not all, starting in 2015, so if we take the rate from the 2015 to present and extrapolate it to an annual rate, we're all the way up to 82 people per year. The last few years have included the Las Vegas Strip, a couple high schools, there was the Virginia Beach Municipal Shooting, and we killed five people at a newspaper with some guns as well. So violent gun deaths caused by mass shootings in the United States are, in fact, on the rise.
This graph is actually the graph that we made and put out on Twitter in between Dayton and El Paso, so it's just really here to remind you that time is of the essence. Like, this is not going away. This is getting worse, and in some cases, it's like within, what, like 24 hours that we have, like, that we have to update these graphs? Like, we couldn't even print these slides until this morning, so...
So we did what normal people do and give the mayor a hard time on Twitter. So the mayor was talking about the Scissor Tail Park opening, and I popped off about true or false. Current Oklahoma law allows out-of-state residents to carry under the laws of their home state. If a white supremacist were to show up at the park opening with an assault rifle, would they be able to walk on in? I am not a lawyer, I am a mathematician, but you'll find that they are actually kind of related. They both involve a lot of proof, okay? So what we did is, we went and we looked at the law, and we got a pretty good understanding of the law. Everything that regulates guns in Oklahoma is in Chapter 21, Oklahoma Statutes Under Crime and Punishments. There are three main sections. The first section prohibits Oklahomans from carrying weapons at all. The second section regulates when you can carry firearms, and the third section allows you to carry handguns with a permit, right? So...
Yeah, so basically, if you're an Oklahoman, you get, you take the class, you get the permit, you're approved, you can have a little gun, not a big gun, not over 16 inches, not some huge rifle, you can carry a little gun if you have a permit.
The law details places where you're allowed to carry guns. So you're always allowed to carry on the street, in a parking lot, at the fairground, unless it's during the state fair. It also says that you can't bring them into City Hall and that kind of thing. And it says that unless you're hunting or practicing some historical reenactment, you're not allowed to carry around a large rifle or shotgun, right? The Oklahoma law, though, also does permit the carry of handguns from anyone from a non-permitting carry state. So in Oklahoma, you have to take a test for a permit. If you're not from Oklahoma, we'll apply whatever the laws are of the state you come from. That means that if you come from one of the 10 states or so that don't have permitting requirements, a driver's license is just fine.
And so how many people is that? Well, right now, it's about 220,000 Oklahomans, then you add about, I don't know, 17 million other permitted gun holders, and then you have to add about 23 million people who live in a permitless carry state. That's about 40 million people that can have guns legally at our parks.
So at Scissor Tail Park opening, we would be able to have, that number of people would be eligible to enter with handguns, right? Which means that the mayor's claim about only permitting holders being able to enter is fine, but it's a little bit iffy. But also, it does mean that what I said is false, okay? So on the Scissor Tail Park opening, if you show up with a loaded assault rifle, we will go ahead and turn you away, but the reason we're at the city council meeting today is because that stops being true on November 1st, and the council has to do something about this. On November 1st, the law is going to change. So Section 1272 of that law was amended by House Bill 2597. It says that you can't carry any weapon, except that it will not prohibit, and then it says the carrying of a firearm concealed or unconcealed, loaded or unloaded by a person who is 21 years of age or older. Now, what's a firearm in Oklahoma law? It's anything that doesn't, that shoots bullets. That's not a, you know, sawed-off shotgun, or a machine gun, or something that's prohibited by federal law. So a firearm is a gun that shoots bullets. It gives a list of reasons why you're not allowed to do that, so if you've been convicted...
So Nick and Louise, just real quick, you're at six minutes, but if you, you know, I'm not going to cut you off quite yet, but if you could kind of, 30 seconds or more.
All right, gonna wrap it up. So the, anyway, after November 1st, you can carry any old thing. And so the main question is, what do we want you to do about this, right? So what's the municipal action? So the Oklahoma Constitution provides for veto referendum of laws, and there's a petition circulating until August 29th to collect signatures that would prevent this law from going into effect until it's been voted on by a plebiscite. In Oklahoma, the Constitution was written in 1907, very lots of progressive government, and we have direct democracy here. The city, right now, because we're on your agenda, you have the opportunity to pass a motion to support that. You can encourage people to go out and sign this petition. If you don't do something, you're going to be in a position where you're going to vote on permits for large public outdoor gatherings that you cannot guarantee are safe.
Okay, thank you very much. Former councillor, Dr. Pastor Lee Cooper. Welcome back.
Hello, Mayor, city manager, council members. Once again, I'm here, and I really hope that we can get you guys at least a triple raise. You definitely need it, but I do want to say thank you for your service, because you're committed to making sure that things happen in our city, and for that, I am grateful to you for how you all serve, so I do want to say that. I really wanted to come, Mayor, because this is the last city council meeting, and I know that you have been through a myriad of hours just dealing with Maps 4 and what is coming up on Maps 4. And I just wanted to stand today and again, challenge you to really give some thought. I know we were early on the agenda for the Clara Lupa Civil Rights Museum, but I'm challenging this city council to really consider what it looks like to have, we, earlier, we had young people who were here who will serve as youth council members. Many of them have absolutely no idea about Clara Lupa and how she served not only Oklahoma City, but this entire nation. On yesterday, we were able to meet in Washington, D.C. with the interim director for the African-American museum. We're working with the Smithsonian, along with our Congresswoman, who is also helping us in that process of ensuring that Oklahoma City really recognizes and sees the importance of the Clara Lupa Civil Rights Museum. And this is important. This weekend, you're invited to come and share with us at the Fifth Street Baptist Church, where we will celebrate 61 years of the Cityan Movement and 50 years of this city's sanitation strike, as the sanitation workers really fought for equal rights and wages. And those are significant events that happened in the life of our city that really shaped the conversation beyond our city. And as you know, we've asked for your support for the Civil Rights Museum. We're still asking for that $25 million. I have in my possession letters of support, and first of all, a letter of support coming from the Prospect Church, and I'll pass this out. In addition, Mayor, I know that you have received emails in reference to the support that is coming from the community, that has gone to the Oklahoma City website. I have possession from the Greater Mount Carmel Baptist Church and Dr. K. Jerome Free. I have, again, in my possession, a letter from the New Hope Baptist Church and Reverend E. Jennings Tyson of Oklahoma City, and I submit this for the record to the city council Along with Pastor Kenneth Morgan and Dr. J. Reed Jr. and many others that represent thousands of voters in northeast Oklahoma City who are asking for this city council to strongly consider the investment that will make the difference in the lives of those who will come to visit this museum, of which we... those who will come to visit this museum, of which we anticipate almost 100,000 people annually. So we're looking for that entertainment district to draw people closer. It's an investment that this city owes to Northeast Oklahoma City, and we're looking for your support, not for a handout, but we're looking for an opportunity to really have the story of Oklahoma City's fullest history memorialized and conveyed, not only for this generation, but for generations to come. And I'm asking for your support. Thank you.
Thank you. Pastor Kenneth Sherrill, not here. Jeremy Moses will be followed by Joy Reardon.
Boy, I didn't think it'd be afternoon before I got up here. My name's Jeremy Moses. I live at 12205 Southwestern Avenue, Apartment 1212, Oklahoma City. I come up here today to speak on drainage issues on Southwest 119th, specifically at the corner of Western, Southwestern and Southwest 119th. That area is prone to, I'll just say it, flooding every time we have a heavy rain. In fact, this morning, I rolled through about an inch of water on the right turn lane coming off of eastbound 119th, getting on to, that turns on to Southwestern, southbound. So we need to address the major drainage issues, and it's not just there, it's in a lot of other places in Oklahoma City. I know Southwest 104th at Western, same issue. Every time it rains heavy, it ponds, and it floods, and it becomes a mess. So I'm just pleading with somebody to address these issues as soon as possible, because we certainly don't want another August 14th issue like we had last year. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
The two issues that I brought up was, one was the drain, and the other is more ADA. Why can't we gear this city towards more ADA accessibility? Sidewalks, curb cutouts, stuff like that. Why, why are we so far behind on these issues? Every day while I'm out traveling the streets, well, most days when it's not extremely hot like it's been the last few days, I keep finding issues. I keep taking them to the, to the Action Center, but it doesn't seem like anything is being done about it. Why aren't we proactive instead of reactive to these issues? Why aren't the, the, I think there's, Mr. Freeman, how many vac trucks do we, does the city own?
I don't know.
Can you check on that?
I can find out.
Because I know that the city crews are under, are under union and stuff. They're under union contract, my understanding. Why aren't some of those guys going around, they see a problem, why aren't they remedying the problem right there, instead of setting it on cues? Setting in back areas where nobody thinks that they, they're not being seen and stuff?
I'm not sure what you're talking about. I'm not sure what, if you've got a specific incident you'd like to report.
I've caught 23 different incidences. I've reported them to the Action Center and everything else, and I still catch the same crews doing the same thing. If we've got vacuum trucks and everything, why are we having so many drainage issues? Why, why am I keep finding trees growing out of the storm drains? Why am I finding grass growing out of the storm drains?
If you, if you have issues that you would like to bring to me on specific areas, I'd be glad to have, have our staff check into that.
I will.
All right.
But my biggest issue until the sidewalks gets fixed is going to be the sidewalks and the ADA accessible stuff. And Mayor, I will be at your council meeting tomorrow. For the disabled.
What about, oh, the, oh, the Mayor's Committee on Disability?
I want to be part of that.
Great, awesome. You gave me a panic that we have another council meeting tomorrow.
No, it's, it's your, your council on disability.
Yeah, yeah, that's awesome. That's great. Cool. All right. Thank you, Joy.
And I'd be willing to work with the city to, with the issues, because I'm going to school to become an architect. Most of y'all don't know that.
All right. Thank you.
I'm just about done with it. Thank you.
That's everyone who signed up to speak. We have no further business on the agenda, and we are adjourned.